It is officially five o'clock, so I'm going to call the 2024 September 17 special town meeting to order. There are people straggling in, but we don't have any lines at the checkout, check-in tables, so we can get started. The first thing I want to do just before we get settled into our businesses, I want to point out and make sure that everyone looks around themselves and sees where their nearest exit is.
There's no sound in the gym.
There's no sound in the gym?
No.
No sound in the gym, guys. All right. While they're working on that, look around and see where the nearest exit is, just so you're aware, there's exits all along the back, here on the side, behind me this way, and over here. Okay, I'm going to read the return of the warrant. Hereof fail not make due return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk at the time and place of meeting an election of horsehead given our hands as 26th day of June in the year 2024. Brooke Moore, Chair; Matthew G. Fee, Vice Chair; Thomas Dixon; Don Hill Holgate; Malcolm McNabb. Select Board... Oh, okay. I haven't really said anything all that interesting yet, anyway, so you haven't missed anything. Pursuant to Chapter 39, Section 10 of the General Laws of the Commonwealth and the warrant adopted June 26, 2024, I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the Town of Nantucket qualified to vote in town affairs, to appear at the times and place and for the purposes within mentioned by posting said notification on July 24, 2024, at the Stop &amp; Shop on Pleasant Street, the Town and County Building at 16 Broad Street, and upon the bulletin boards at the corner of Main and Federal Streets and Sias Conset Square, sworn to under pains and penalties of perjury, Jerry W. Adams, Constable. Okay, if you would please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll tell these guys. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Because this is a special, we don't do any sort of opening festivities, we just sort of dive right into it. I do have just a couple of announcements I want to make. First of all, this is a one-night meeting, so we get it done tonight, or we don't get it done at all. We're not coming back. We do have three rooms set up. We have this main room, which can accommodate about 900 people. We have the high school gym behind us. I think that's another 600 to 800 people. And then we also have the CPS gym, if that's necessary. Slightly different than other times, they're now ideally going to be connected by video and audio. There's one microphone in each room where people will be able to speak from, so they won't have to come running down here and speak anymore. We will theoretically have them on camera when they're speaking. And in this room, we have four microphones, two down here, two in the back. At the moment, all of the voters are in this room, and the gym is just non-voters. So I'll just be circulating amongst these four microphones. If we move to having voters in either of the gyms, then I'll also be rotating to those microphones as well. If at any point you're confused and you don't know what's happening, please, if you're able, rise from your chair and raise a point of order. I'm more than happy to stop and explain. I don't want to have any unnecessary confusion, it's confusing enough as it is. We do have the electronic voting handsets. Everyone should have gotten one when they came in. You'll note on your handset, there's a colored button here at the top. If you're in this room, your button should be either dark blue, light blue, or green. If you happen to be in the gym, your device is either going to be red or pink, and if you're in the CPS gym, your device will be yellow. You can't be in this room and vote on a yellow device, or a pink or a red device. You can only vote in this room on a blue, light blue, and green device. So if you get up and move to another room with your green, blue, or light blue device, you're not going to be able to vote where you are, you've got to be in this room. We don't have any quorum requirements for any of the articles tonight. I'm really thrilled to announce we have no technical amendments. We do have some non-voters in this room, primarily town employees. John Giorgio, Town Council, is down in front. Paul Murphy, the Building Commissioner, Finance Director, Public Health Director, the ACNVT, and I never remember what that stands for, Association of Non-Voting Taxpayers? Oh, Advisory Committee of Non-Voting Taxpayers. And Peter Kahn is their representative, and he's able to speak in accordance with the provisions of the Charter. I have one other non-voter who's asked to be able to speak, and that's Kathy Baird. Kathy has spoken in the past as a representative of the ACNVT, but Mr. Kahn is here for that. She was a member of the short-term rental, no, Short-Term Rental Work Group, and I would like your consent to allow her to speak. Anyone opposed to that? One, okay. All right, so that's allowed. I don't believe we have any other non-voters. Oh, okay, two, okay. But it's clearly adopted, that's a majority vote. Traditions and Procedures is our little handbook of helpful supplement to Town Meeting Time. Town Meeting Time is the Blue Book, that's our, kind of our Bible, it's a little bit more friendly than Robert's Rules. It is a handbook of parliamentary law, but geared to particularly New England town meetings. It's been revised a couple of times, it's a little bit more user-friendly. And then, Traditions and Procedures is the little nine-page supplement to our rules. This is what sets forth the call of the articles and things like that. So I'd like your unanimous consent to adopt that as additional supplemental rules of the meeting. Thank you, anyone opposed? Okay, that's unanimous, thank you. We will be doing positive motions, so what that means is, when you're voting on a motion, unless I'm very, very clear, a yes vote will adopt the motion that you're voting on, and a no vote will defeat that motion. We always try to do positive motions, it gets really confusing to do it any other way. Please silence your cellphones. When you're at the microphone talking, don't have cross-talk between audience members, it all should come through me. Please remove your hats, particularly when speaking. Time limits seems to be a thing of interest, you'd be really surprised to know that your fellow residents are not all that interested in hearing from you at length. They're happy to hear you for a couple of minutes, but they don't have a lot of patience when you drag on beyond that. So let me explain how that's going to work. Generally speaking, the sponsor of the article gets five minutes to tell you all why it's a great idea, what they've proposed. Whoever has called the article gets five minutes to tell you why they think it isn't a good idea. After that, the first time you speak, it's two minutes. If you get up and speak for a second time, it's one minute, and don't count on being able to speak any more than that. It happens, but... And I also want to mention, the time limits don't apply necessarily to things like, if you ask me to ask Town Council about the legality of some particular motion or part of a motion, and I ask him to respond, he gets to respond in whatever time it takes for him to give the answer, within, of course, reason, Mr. Giorgio, don't go too crazy. I think that's it. Before we call the articles, when we call the articles, I'm going to go through them, one through 17. If you're happy with the recommendation made by the Finance Committee or the Planning Board, you don't need to call the article. We'll vote the uncalled articles in accordance with their recommendations, all as printed in the warrant. If, however, something has gotten a negative recommendation and you want to put forward a positive motion, or on the other hand, it's gotten a positive motion and you would like to make sure it's defeated, then you should call the article, and we'll discuss it when it comes up. You do not have to be an article sponsor, or a town employee, anything, anyone can call an article that they want to talk about at any point. So I will do that first, and then we'll take a vote on whatever is uncalled. I think it's going to be very little, but we'll see. One, Ms. Benz. Two, Ms. Lepri. Four, Mr. Sanders. Five, Ms. Perrin. Eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen have been called by Mr. Maury. Sixteen, Ms. Rayport. And seventeen. Okay. So the uncalled articles are three, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, fifteen, and seventeen. Yes. Fifteen? Is that you, Mr. Peel? Okay. Okay, that had a do-not, was a no recommendation.
I'm sorry.
Never mind, okay. All right, so I'm going to just read them through, the uncalled articles. Three was a motion not to adopt. Six, seven, those are no action. Eight is a zoning bylaw amendment with a positive recommendation and a two-thirds majority required. Nine is a motion to take no action. Ten is a zoning map change, and that has a two-thirds vote requirement, and that was Fifteen had a negative recommendation, as did seventeen. So when we vote on those as a block, the ones that had do-not adopt motions will not be adopted, and the two that had positive recommendations, being eight and 10, will be adopted in accordance with the motion that's printed in the warrant. Any questions before we go to a vote? Okay, so here's the voting situation. You have your handset. It's one for yes, and two for no. When voting's open, this light to my right will be green. You can, during that time period, if you change your mind, if you vote yes and you decide you want to vote no, you can go back and forth between the two, as much as you want, when you're not busy looking at yourselves. And when it's over, they'll give me a tabulation. When we're all in this room, it's probably going to be 30 seconds. If we start going into other rooms, then we'll probably have a little bit longer, because it takes longer for all the signals to come in. So on the motion, I'm going to recognize... Oh, and I should have said who all these people are. So here, your left, my right, is the Town Clerk's table. Laura Remo is sometimes down there, Nancy Holmes, then Town Council, John Giorgio, Town Manager Libby Gibson, the Select Board, Brooke Moore, Matt Fee, Tom Dixon, Don Hill Holgate, Malcolm McNabb. Then we have the Finance Committee, Vice Chair Stephen Maury, Chair Denise Cronow, Planning Board Chair Dave Iverson, Vice Chair Joe Topham. And then, in the other rows in the front, we have the other members of those committees. We just, unfortunately, particularly with the piano, cannot fit everyone up at the front. So I'm going to recognize the Chair of the Finance Committee, Ms. Cronow, for the purpose of making this motion.
So move, Madam Moderator.
You don't have it. The uncalled article motion? Okay. So the motion that we're going to make is motion to adopt the uncalled articles, being Articles three, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, fifteen, and seventeen, as recommended and/or amended by the Finance Committee, or as recommended and/or amended by the Planning Board, as printed in the Finance Committee Report, which is this, with amendments brought forward during the course of the meeting, which there aren't any. Three, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, fifteen, and seventeen. Is that your motion, Ms. Cronow?
Yes, it is, Madam Moderator.
Is there a second? Okay. This does require a two-thirds vote. A yes vote will adopt that motion, a no vote will defeat the motion. It will be one for yes, two for no, and voting is open. And you'll see that when you hit your one or two, you'll get a message that says "received." If at any point during the course of the meeting you have a problem with your handset, the electronic voting help desk is over in the wings, and you can take your handset over and they'll have a look at it or give you another one. Okay, on that motion, 638, yes. 69, no. That motion is adopted by a two-thirds majority. Okay, you're going to notice, between articles and votes, I'm going to take a little, couple beats of time. That's in case anybody decides that they want to make a motion to reconsider. Just to remind you, under our rules, a motion to reconsider must be made at the time that the action is taken. That's been interpreted over the years to mean immediately after the vote and before we take up the next piece of business. So you have to be a little quick on your feet. You also have to have voted with the prevailing side, so you can't move for reconsideration if you voted yes and the article didn't pass. But if you voted yes and the article passed and you want to reconsider, then you're eligible. Okay. Ms. Cronow, did you have a motion you wanted to make?
I do, Madam Moderator, thank you. I make a motion to move Article II ahead of Article I. The significant amendments for...
Let me just get that on the floor, so is that your motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Cronow?
The significant amendments proposed were not discussed, deliberated, or motioned by either the Planning Board or the Finance Committee, because they were submitted by the sponsor after the review process for the warrant had closed. Because of this, it's in the voter's best interest to understand the changes proposed before any other S.T. article is discussed.
All right. Mr. Peel? If anyone wishes to be heard on this motion, they should come to a microphone. You might have to turn it on. It's on.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Moderator. Matthew Peel. With all due respect to Ms. Cronow, I strongly disagree, and, you know, we handed out sheets explaining our amendments here at the beginning of the meeting for everyone that wanted to take a sheet and see a sheet. We submitted them ahead of time. We've submitted them to you and your departments as well, a few within the last week or so, when we finally got approval for these amendments. And if my understanding is correct, Article I also has four amendments that are going to be proposed this evening as well. So with our one simple amendment, basically cutting this down in Article II, I would say we're going to spend a lot more time on Article I, and that needs to be explained with four separate amendments before Article II. And also, you know, I was there and part of the work group with the Select Board when they set the warrant, and they had a chance, we discussed changing the articles around, and they chose not to. And I want to respect those decisions by the Select Board as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dues.
Is the mic on?
Yes.
Thank you. And Dues, I would like to agree with my colleague, Mr. Peel, and also point out that this article was posted on The Current, including its Instagram page, which I gather everybody on Nantucket is glued to. And I would also like to point out that in May, the articles having to do with short-term rental were brought forward, but they were kept in the order in which they were in the warrant. So I see absolutely no basis for making a change tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Benz?
How do I turn this thing on?
It's on.
Okay. Well, I agree with my colleagues in Nantucket neighborhoods first. All we have done with Article II is simplify it, make it easier. The provisions are largely the same. We think Article I's going to go down regardless, so, you know, if that's what the voters want, fine, but we do think that the order that was presented in the warrant is fair, and Ms. Alger has approved last Thursday, approved our positive motion, and I don't know that there is anything in the rules that require a positive motion to be reviewed by the Select Board or the Planning Board or the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. DeCosta.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Here we go again. Five different articles for one simple thing. Well, not simple, but one thing. I support the Finance Committee's recommendation. I would like to have had the chance to watch a lively debate about this in front of them. Just because you put it on The Current doesn't mean everybody got to read it. Have you ever tried to read something on The Current on your phone? It's not easy. I would like to discuss this article first, get it out of the way, one way or the other, and then go on to Article I. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So we're going to vote on Ms. Cronow's motion. Ms. Cronow's motion is to change the order and move Article II in front of Article I. This motion requires a majority vote. A yes vote will adopt the motion, a no vote will defeat the motion. Okay, on this motion, yes, 308, no, 438. That is not adopted. Okay. Ms. Rayport, did you have a motion you wanted to make at this? Yes? You do not, okay. Okay, so we're going to go diving directly into Article I. Article I is going to be the motion as printed in the warrant. Motion starts at the bottom of Page 3, continues over a variety of pages, and ends on Page 6. It does require a two-thirds vote. I would recognize Mr. Iverson, the Chair of the Planning Board, for the purpose of making the motion as printed in the warrant.
So move, Madam Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded.
Hello, everyone. My name's David Iverson. I'm speaking today as a citizen, not as a member of a board. I've been asked to represent Article I for the group that worked hard to find the middle ground. Article I is a true consensus article, and it represents the concerns of what I believe is the large majority of the community. What it doesn't represent are the more radical views of either side of this issue. Article I is clear in its language and its intentions. If you own a house and you've been renting it, you will retain a right to rent that house for eight turnovers in July and August. There will be no restrictions on the shoulder season. Although this does seem like not quite enough regulation, the trend right now is to shorter periods of rentals, and eight turnovers is far preferable to 16. If you've owned your house for five years or more and have never rented, your right to rent eight weeks in July and August is protected. No restrictions on the shoulder season. We are protecting the rights of long-term homeowners to rent if they choose. If you buy a new house, you will be restricted to three turnovers in July and August for a five-year period. Shoulder season will be unrestricted. The intent here is twofold. It is designed to slow the possible growth of rentals, as well as drastically reducing and eliminating the profit margin on investor-only STRs. Everyone is limited to one STR per property. If you own multiple, you have eight years to transfer that property out of your name. You also have the ability to long-term rent it or rent it for less than 14 days, or 14 days or less. Hosted stays in existing cottage colonies are not subject to restrictions on turnovers. This is done to protect the traditional Nantucket rentals. This is all achieved through definitions in our zoning bylaw, as well as changes to our use chart. This by no means guts zoning. This by no means guts zoning. We have added a definition to zoning called Nantucket vacation rentals. This definition is very specific. It ingrains all the regulations I've spoken of above into a zoning bylaw that is straightforward, easy to understand. This highly specific, highly regulated use will be allowed in all but the commercial-industrial zoning districts. The simplicity of this article is very important. Everyone knows where they stand and what they have a right to do with their property. Regulations based on residency requirements are confusing and hard to enforce, as well as having a huge question mark as to their legality. It is time for us as a community to put the S T R debate to rest. We have an opportunity to end this divisiveness now, tonight. There are many larger problems on our horizon that we need to focus on. In closing, I ask that you refrain from amendments that substantially change, confuse, or water down the intent of this article. Simply allow the voters to vote this up or down. Madam Moderator, I would like to retain my remaining time to answer questions or address concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Jamie House from MyComment App. I would like to ask a couple of questions on this and also potentially propose an amendment. There's been a lot of discussion about the turnovers being problematic, and I've been doing this a long time. And the thing about turnovers is kind of misleading. I mean, the turnovers are somebody drives out in the morning on Saturday, the crew comes in and cleans, and then somebody else drives in on Saturday afternoon. That's it. Ironically, those things happen during a period of the time between ten in the morning and three in the afternoon, and there's a vacancy there. People have not arrived yet. That's one of the lowest population moments during the course of the summer, is that span between checkout and the subsequent check-in. I've asked repeatedly of the people that are sponsoring this why it's so important to cut this back. One of the people that it's going to impact, it strikes me, it's pretty fair that it's eight, but why is it any? I've not been able to get a good answer on that. Turnovers are apparently somehow more problematic in July and August than they are in June when there's weddings. Oh, by the way, look at the dates on this year. I'm a little, I could be wrong on this because I may not be interpreting the wording exactly as Town Council and everyone else, the good people have put it together. But you could either do July Fourth weekend or Labor Day, but you could not do both this year because of the way they fall. It would be nine. That might make sense, and that gets you into the shoulder. So perhaps I would propose an amendment to jigger the language a little bit such that it's possible for when the major weekends do fall, where they fall, that you're allowed both of them. But I'm still absolutely unconvinced that when people come in and clean the house, that that's somehow a hardship, and that during the period of time, I'd just like to point out, during the period of time that people leave, get on a boat and get out of here, and other people come in in the afternoon, that's like a lull.
Thank you. Ms. Benz, you called this. Did you wish to speak?
Yes. My name is Charity Benz.
And just to be clear, I'm giving, because you called the article, I'm giving you five minutes.
Thank you very much. I am a representative of Nantucket Neighborhoods First who participated in the Select Board Subcommittee to try to create a compromise article for today's meeting. Some good provisions were proposed and agreed upon, but a key provision was left out. It is so key that Nantucket Neighborhoods First could not agree. We have maintained this position since the beginning. Let me explain. Many people sitting in this room probably have no idea or have never looked at the use chart, which is in the zoning bylaw. It's important because the most critical element in Article One would place a Y, which stands for yes, in the use chart for what is now going to be, or is proposed to be called a Nantucket short-term rental. It will put that in every residential neighborhood. And the argument is that guardrails will be set up to protect homeowners in provisions one through three. This is a simple chart. It has every zoning district going across the top in columns, and every use going down the left-hand side. And then is a Y or an N or an A or something like that put into the slot for that particular use under the column in which you live. This proposes to permit short-term rentals in every residential zone by right on Nantucket. If this article is passed tonight by two-thirds and becomes a zoning bylaw, it is virtually I want to explain the consequences of this. The decision tonight to put that one little letter, Y, into the chart under the column for the residential zoning district in which you live will permit investors to buy the properties around you and develop them into S T Rs for commercial use. They would own that property, and they would have an absolute right to do that. The intent of Article One was to try to write provisions into Section 13938-38 that would be needed to assure neighbors that they were being protected. However, watch for amendments tonight from special interests that will most certainly attempt to gut those protections in provisions one through three. Please pay close attention to the amendments that are offered because they can only be accepted if they are less restricted. If those protections are whittled down or stripped away, other protections that are written in the water article will be meaningless to protect owners and residential neighborhoods. If in the course of tonight's discussion the Y remains in the use chart, this article opens the entire island to exploitation by investors and special interests, much as Article 51 would have done if it hadn't been passed. So what is the impact? As of June 7, 2024, there were 10,775 properties listed on the residential parcel list maintained by the town assessor, Mr. Rannick. At the present time, the list of current short-term rentals on Nantucket ranges from something over 1,000 reported by local realtors to around 2,000 on the state short-term registry, where anyone who plans to rent their Nantucket home must register their property, whether they actually rent it or not. I asked Mr. Rannick to remove parcels that could not be rented for one reason or another. The resulting total is, conservatively, 6,000 new dwellings that can be S T R'd. Putting a yes in the use chart for a Nantucket vacation rental can increase the number of properties available by right to short-term rent by a factor of three to six times over the number that exists today. Moreover, if Article One is approved in a zoning bylaw, as I said before, the decision is effective immediately tonight upon passage of the article, which would be today, and B, that once that little Y gets put into the use chart, it is done for perpetuity. There is no going back. As you go to make your final vote on Article One tonight, please keep the number 6,000 in mind. It is a frightening number that could crush Nantucket. Please vote no on Article One. I'm yielding the rest of my time to Emily Kilver.
There's no time left, Ms. Benz, but Ms. Kilver, if you want to use your two minutes, go right ahead.
Sure. Thank you. Emmy Kilver, member of Nantucket Neighborhoods First. You have just heard from Ms. Benz the reason that Nantucket Neighborhoods First could not agree to this so-called compromise. The cost to neighborhoods in quality of life was far greater than any of the security Article One's guardrails provisions one through three could assure. As Matt Peel and Charity, who served on the Select Board Subcommittee, knew, they would likely be loosened by the special interests at this meeting tonight. Moreover, the town has not yet established a user-friendly, reliable, short-term rental registry to accurately report Nantucket's experience with short-term rentals. It is pure folly to pass this major piece of legislation in the absence of solid data, not to mention the lack of reliable enforcement. Even though none of this would happen overnight, it is our job as legislators to protect Nantucket from the damage that unrestrained and unregulated S T Rs have already inflicted around the country and the world. We need to be looking at how what we do tonight will affect what Nantucket will look like in five, 10, 20 years. The suggestion that we should try this out or say yes to something irresponsible is reckless. We can't remove the Y in the use chart if Article One is passed tonight. It will be there forever. We need to take this right, and Matt Peel and Charity can tell you that the process to write Article One was rushed to meet the deadline of that committee. I urge you all to vote no on Article One.
Thank you. It's on.
They can hear me anyway. They always can. I'd like to make an amendment. Very simple. I'm not adding anything. I'm taking two things away, which have been the most problematic. I was involved with a group of four other people. There were five of us. Steve Cohen, who can't be here tonight, otherwise he would have done this. Arthur Reed, Penny Dye, Steve Maury, and myself. We spent a lot of time talking about it. We were responsible for the Articles Three and Six, which are to take no action. Steve was involved. I think Steve was involved in the work group, and it wasn't rushed. Tom was the chairman, and it wasn't rushed. There was a substantial amount of discussion, a lot of meetings.
You have a minute, so you better get to your amendment.
I'm going to my amendment. You have it up there, I think, on the, without my glasses, I can't see it.
So your amendment is to strike Paragraph Two. An owner who previously engaged in more than one Nantucket vacation rental use on more than one lot prior to the effective date of this bylaw may continue to do so for a period of eight years thereafter. The same or any new owner shall be subject to the limitations set forth in 13938-1. And to delete from Section Three the phrase "after July and August." You're deleting "provided, however, that an owner who acquires a dwelling unit or a lot after the effective date of this bylaw may only engage in a Nantucket vacation rental use with no more than three transfers of occupancy in July and August for the first five years of ownership of the dwelling unit or a lot." Is that your motion?
Yes, my motion.
Is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. Okay. Go ahead.
The Sunset Clause, which is Paragraph Two in Article One, 13938, is problematic. Basically, it's going to eliminate an awful lot of things. Let's say an island person sold their house, bought another house, they're back from eight to three. So it's not just going to affect people coming in to buy now, it's going to affect anybody who lives here or any family who, like mine, downsized, and they would go back from eight to three. So there's a lot of unintended consequences here, and I know that my family had to rent their house in order to keep it for everybody to do that. The new owner restriction is ridiculous. It creates an inequity. The guy next to you can do eight and you can do three because you happen to buy in now. Again, that would be us buying, and I'd move to a smaller house, and I would be back to three. I think both of these are problematic. This is something that our group did not support at all. We sort of went along with it. Steve wasn't there at the end to fight it, but he wanted to make sure that these were taken out.
Okay, that's time.
I don't get two minutes?
That was two minutes.
Well, you read half of it for two minutes.
No, you went for over a minute, and then you went for another minute.
You read half of it for two minutes.
I didn't take out the time when I was talking.
You did take that out.
You're not helping yourself.
Well, that's why I did it, is because those two sections were very problematic and were something that we thought would be damaging to not just new people, but the existing people and the longstanding families that are here.
Thank you. Okay. On Ms. Williams' amendment. See, no one? A yes vote will adopt the amendment. A no vote will defeat the amendment. Amendment requires a majority vote.
Point of order here, just for a second.
Yes.
Just for a second. Campbell Sutton here. I hadn't planned on speaking to this tonight. I would like to say right off that I'm just opposed to any amendments to what has been written to the people that have taken the time to put this together. I understand that the parties involved in two, three, four, and six, maybe seven, seven's I think more enforcement, nonetheless, I get where they would like to undo what this group has done. Personally, I think it's incredibly important that we, one, accept what we have written along with Article Five, which I think is key to keeping the investment group out of our vacation rentals, let me put it that way. My point of order to this is also that we would no longer be calling short-term rentals short-term rentals. This article proposes to put an N for no in short-term rentals across the board in the zoning use chart. And in place of that, you would have Nantucket vacation rental that would be allowed when it follows into these parameters. And then if you take these parameters out, what do you have? So I really don't think we should go about weakening it. I think we should take it on its face. Also, as I said, believe with Article Five, we would really tie up a lot of loose ends. There'd be some technical wording that would have to take place, you know, by May or whatever, but nothing drastic.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Iverson?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. David Iverson, speaking for myself again. I urge everyone sitting in here not to vote yes on this amendment. Gutting Article One defeats the purpose of what we're doing here. Please vote this amendment down. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So a yes vote will adopt the amendment, a no vote will defeat the amendment. Are you coming to the microphone to speak?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Go ahead.
Caroline Baldser. I would like to point out that if we don't remove the eight-year Sunset Clause, then we are all agreeing to have families, I know a lot of families who I would definitely not want to have this happen to. We are saying to them that you only have eight years to be able to do what you are already doing with those houses, which those families need to do, I know they do, in order to keep them in their families. They've had them for a long time. So we would all be telling those families that at Thanksgiving or holidays that they have to say to their children, their grandchildren, their friends, their family, hey, only six more years, and, you know, we're gonna, this is it. We can't allow those people just to enjoy their family houses as so many of us have done for generations on Nantucket, and I really think that's wrong. I think it amounts to community bullying, and I just want people to consider that. There are a lot of good people that should not happen to, who I'm worried about. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kitchener?
John Kitchener, member of the Planning Board and one of the team that put together Article One. Just two points. First of all, I think most of us in the room know that the biggest issue around short-term rentals is the investor-only rentals, that people that own them, they never come here, they are not invested at all in our community, and it's just another asset class for them alongside their stock market portfolio. And to, this provision to limit to three changes of occupancy in July and August for five years, this will definitely reduce the profit opportunity drastically, and I think to even think about removing that would, it's just not something we should do. do. On the eight years, you know, we had a lot of debate about that when the Select Board Collaboration Process was going on. And the fact is, you know, one side of this argument wanted absolutely no Sunset, that they should be, anybody who owns multiple STRs should lose them immediately. On the other side, you know, that it was, well, forever. We tried to come down the middle with something that would allow people to get their financial house in order. Eight years is, is, you know, it's quite a long time. So, you know, we were trying to do no harm with that, that number. So I would strongly ask everyone to, to vote no to this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Beard?
Thank you, and I don't think I'm going to say anything too controversial. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I just wanted to do kind of a public service announcement on speaking. I also was a member of the Short-Term Rental Work Group, and I just realized this week that one of the, the only legislation we brought to town meeting that passed last special town meeting less than 10 months ago was the Community Impact Fee, which was Article Three at the time. And what this does was puts a 3% tax on all of the revenues from any multiple-owner short-term rentals. This was passed, I think, 595 to 66. So depending on how, and this is, I'm not speaking in favor or against any particular article, but all of them or some of them do deal with multiple STR owners. So the revenue from that would be a million or more a year paid for by visitors that goes right into the town budget. It's administered by the State Department of Revenue, and it's to go into effect in two weeks, on October 1st. And so all I'm asking is, is just trying to remind everybody that this was passed by this body here, and that that's revenue that's going to the town, administered by the state, and just consider that with all of the other things you're considering when you make your decision to vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
I'm Michelle Kolb. I'm an architect and preservationist.
Can you just get a little closer to the microphone?
Okay.
Thanks.
I restore and preserve historic houses here on the island, and I have a few of them, and I do it because the community was founded on historic tourism. And by limiting an eight-year lifespan to having multiple houses would also limit the ability to do that. And I would think everyone here would agree that the, this is what our tourism thrives on, to be able to show outside community our historic properties. And I would urge really voting yes to strike these two clauses. Eight-year is an arbitrary timeframe. I mean, these houses have been here for hundreds of years, and, and people should see them and visit them, and that's what they should support visiting our community for.
Thank you. Mr. DeCosta?
Madam Moderator, before I get going, I just, I want to, I want to make sure I have two minutes to speak on this article in general, but I want to talk about this amendment. And I want, it's a point of order more than it's a discussion.
Sure.
My understanding is that the eight years is only for multiple, for individuals who own multiple units, i.e. the corporations. There are going to be some individuals who own more than one house, but this gets rid of the blue flags and the other corporations, and to strike this out of here would be a bad, bad, bad thing to do. That's all I have, I just want to be clear on that and make sure the audience knows that. So if someone could verify that or not verify that, I would appreciate it.
Does somebody want to verify that? That's correct. That's correct. Okay, so on the amendment, on the amendment only, a yes vote will adopt the amendment. Oh, are you speaking again on the amendments?
Yes.
Okay, you got a minute.
I don't know about blue flag, it's the first I've heard they owned rental properties, but you just verified that. I thought they were commercial, I'm ignorant about that, but we do have really good statistical...
They don't, actually.
They don't own rental properties?
No.
Okay. We also have a really good statistical analysis that shows that we have 2.2% corporate-owned that was done last year, which is reassuring to me, and we just passed Article 60, which will prevent any further. And I think people who are involved in rentals, I don't know anybody who even is a corporate-owned STR operator, as, as we are now calling them. I think Nantucket is the oldest vacation seasonal heritage tourism economy. It's been doing it for well over 100 years. My great-grandmother rented a house on Halbert Avenue, and her proprietor was listed on the photo of this house, and she owned several. This is something we do well. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Murphy?
Okay, sorry to be sneaking in here.
If you could state your name for the record.
Oh, Kit Murphy, I thought you said it.
I did.
Apologies to be sneaking in here at the last second, but the whole reason for these two clauses, proposals, whatever you wish to call them, was to disincentivize the strictly for-profit STRs. And while there may be a few people who get caught up in unintended consequences, you do not have to decimate Article One by a wholesale bleeding and getting rid of, excuse me, getting rid of these two clauses. It can be done in half a sentence. A half a sentence change would protect the people who are downsizing or upsizing for that matter. Thank you.
Thank you. So a yes vote will adopt the amendment, a no vote will defeat the amendment. It's one for yes, two for no, and voting is now open. So I just want to mention, we do have a few voters in the gym. Very excited that one of them might come to a microphone, so I have to keep checking.
Fire chief asked me to announce that there is an exit up front and two behind me in the event that we need to rapidly leave this room.
Where did that come from? Very powerful. It's like a voice from, I don't know where. Okay. Yes, 173. No, 672. That amendment is not adopted. Okay, so now we're back on Article One as printed in the warrant and as moved by the Finance Committee.
Madam Moderator, I'd like to propose an amendment.
Mr. Howard?
Yes. Along the lines of what I was talking about before, it's just a, a simple change, which would be to change the eight weeks, just so that it would be inclusive of both July 4th and Labor Day, whatever that works out. So it will be X weeks, allowing for the week that contains July 4th and the week that contains Labor Day. Thank you.
Okay, but wait a minute. Whoa, whoa, whoa. Where, where does it go?
Well, as I said before, this year, the way that the timing works out, you could either have a July 4th or a Labor Day, because of the way that the weeks fall. And what I'm proposing is that rather than a numerical number of weeks, that it be set up such that a person could rent both of the July 4th week and the week that leads to Labor Day. Because to do otherwise, it's an either-or. Well, I don't understand what's the problem of that is...
Here's, here's what the problem is.
Okay.
Then I don't know where to put this amendment. I don't know, I need to change...
Number three.
Number three. And so in number three, you want to change, I mean, we don't have anything about September in there.
No, we don't, but the July, the end of August does roll into the September 1st Monday in September.
Yeah, Mr. Sanders, what's your point of order?
I just want to point out that we're not talking about weeks, we're talking about changeovers. So in the case of a changeover, it could happen in June, and the change, the, the contract could start in June, and the changeover could happen in July, and also the contract could end in September, and the, the changeover could happen before that contract.
I see. Okay, but before we have any more...
Well, I would like to just point out that that's, that's not correct.
Just hang on, just a second, okay? I just want to get your, see, this is why it's really helpful to get these things ahead, because this is like making sausage, and these people aren't interested in sausage.
There's no sausage involved in that, Madam Moderator. I would strongly, strongly dispute that.
So...
The way that the intent of it is, is to create eight turnovers.
Okay.
And that's not sufficient. You need one more in order for the math to work.
So you want it to say nine instead of eight?
Yes, that would cover, cover all eventualities you're talking about, or you could be even a little more slick, which would be to say turnovers inclusive of the weekend of July 4th and the weekend of Labor Day. That would either give you eight or nine, depending on what year it was.
Okay, well, let's go with the simple, because I can't handle the other part. What's, your motion would be to change eight to nine in this Section Three?
Correct.
Okay, is there a second? Okay. Now, have you said what you wanted to say about it, or did you have anything else to say?
Nothing other than that I, I don't see it as anything other than a technical correction. I think the, the, the intent of this, I can see. As I had stated earlier, I don't really completely agree with it, the turnovers themselves are problematic. As a matter of fact, it's just one more car pulling in and out of the driveway. It just doesn't make any sense to me. However, to accommodate the intent here, which is to have eight turnovers so this July, so that it's in July and August, what happens in some years, you will limit your ability of that individual to rent both July 4th and Labor Day because of the way the Wednesday, Thursday, Friday falls, or the Monday, Monday, Monday falls. So that's why I would, would say nine. I had a more elegant, I think, solution, which was just to include both the weekend encompassing July 4th and encompassing September, but that's probably language that's too complex for, for whatever.
For me, for sure.
Yeah, for you, definitely, yeah. But let's make it nine.
Okay. Mr. Iverson?
Thank you, David Iverson, speaking for myself as a citizen. The way this is set up is if you rent a house, if you rent for a week, let's say, and you rent, your rental starts in June and runs through the weekend of July 4th, that does not count as one of your eight turnovers. The turnovers count when the contract begins in those months. So as far, I mean, I know that the calendar changes every year, but if you look at the calendar for next year, if you start your rental on Saturday and end on Saturday, that's going to be a, that's not going to be one of your eight, and you will get July 4th in that week. So I, I think that, that we're getting a little ahead of ourselves with this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. On Mr. Howard's amendment. Okay. A yes vote will adopt the amendment, a no vote will defeat the amendment. The amendment is to change eight to nine in Section Three. One for yes, two for no. Okay, on Mr. Howard's amendment. Yes, 221. No, 639. The amendment is not adopted. So now we're back on the main motion made by the Finance, no, made by the Planning Board as printed in the warrant on Article One. And I'll come to you.
Devin Murphy? Is this on? There we go.
Yes, you have to get a little closer to the microphone, Mr. Murphy.
Devin Murphy, thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm here tonight as the managing agent for, just to be clear, I'm proposing a, a small amendment.
Okay, and let's get your amendment going. So your amendment is going to miraculously appear in a second. And you're changing Section Seven. You're crossing out time-sharing or time interval ownership dwelling units or dwellings, and then you're adding the following at the end of Section Seven. Any home with an original declaration of covenants and restriction of interval ownership deeded as a timeshare or time interval ownership dwelling units or dwellings after the year 2020 shall be prohibited from Nantucket Vacation Rental homes. Homes with an original declaration of covenants and restriction of interval ownership deeded as timeshare or time interval ownership prior to 2020 shall be able to continue to rent their time in compliance with the Town of Nantucket Code. Is that your motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. Okay, Mr. Murphy, you have two minutes.
I'm here tonight as the managing agent for 26 fractionally-owned properties and about 300 owners of those units. 25 of these homes are located in Maticket and Tristram's Landing, and one is located in town. Majority of these homes were built in the late '70s or early '80s and have been continuously deed restricted by covenants as interval ownership properties since their inception. For those who are unfamiliar with how fractional ownership works or interval ownership, it's slightly different than timeshares. These owners own legal property, and, you know, they're, they're fractional owners with deeded property to the, to the properties. Multiple owners own in these homes, and the units we manage, there are, there are two other institutional properties on the island, the Mariner House on the corner of India and Center Street, and Brantpoint Cart Yard down in the Brantpoint neighborhood. In these units, each owner owns a portion of the home and has the right to occupy that home during specific times of the year. Traditionally, if an owner cannot use their time, they rent it to someone who can. Therefore, every week or every two weeks, occupancy turns over in these cottages between owners or between owners and renters. The use of the home is the same regardless of whether an owner is there or whether someone is there whom they've rented it to. As the article was written, it, it eliminated use by right for these owners to be able to, to, to rent their time, and they've always been able to rent it. Our amendment proposes to just continue to allow those properties, just those particular properties that have always been set up this way, to continue to use their time as they always have.
Thank you. Okay, on Mr. Murphy's amendment. Okay, it's one for yes... Okay, it's one for yes, two for no. Voting is open. On Mr. Murphy's amendment. Yes, 453, no, 388. That motion is adopted. Okay. So now we'll be back on Article One as moved by Mr. Iverson, as amended by Mr. Murphy. Mr. Solskjaer. And then I'll go to you, Mr. Sanders, sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Solskjaer, we'll go back to Mr. Sanders, he's very patient.
He is very patient. Jim Solskjaer, retired teacher and a member of the team that negotiated Article One. I speak to you tonight in favor of compromise, the kind of thoughtful compromise that gave us this article. It's the result of a lot of hard work and sincere effort to find solutions that are fair and enforceable. That's important. Here's an example. One possible way, and we thought of this, to limit investor-only STR growth would, growth would be through a residency requirement. This would require STR owners to spend time living on the island. In fact, one of the shining stars of STR regulations, Palm Springs, California, once had a 30-day residency requirement for all STR owners. Sounded like a good idea, but in the past year, they ended it. This spring, I called up an enforcement officer there and asked why. To begin with, the residency requirement probably violated a federal law, the Commerce Clause. But worse, she told me, the residency requirement was completely unenforceable. People self-reporting in ways that weren't accurate. Neighbors spying on neighbors, arguments everywhere, and no real substance for the enforcement team to make a ruling. So they dropped the residency requirement. My group originally had a residency requirement, but having learned from Palm Springs, our negotiating team dropped that idea also and came up with a new idea. For new STRs in the first five years of ownership, a house can only be rented three times in summer. This will do the same thing, deter investors, but in a legal and enforceable way. It's important that Article One is the only article that restricts those investors in enforceable ways. Please remember that. It's a good, fair compromise. It deters investors and protects traditional Nantucket Vacation Rentals, and it does offer us a clear path forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Grant Sanders. Like Jim, I was also a member of the work group that created the, this compromise article. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about why this has a Y in the use chart and not an A in the use chart. You know, back in the spring, I was an A in the use chart kind of guy. I, I really liked the idea of an accessory use because it seems like, um, it seems like a short-term rental is, is customarily incidental to a residence, right? But unfortunately, um, our zoning has a very specific, uh, definition of accessory use. It's a use that's incident, customarily incidental and subordinate to something else. And the vast majority of our short-term rentals on this island are not true accessory use opportunities. They are, you know, many of them remain vacant throughout the wintertime, and so it just seemed patently unfair to try to shoehorn everybody into an accessory use. So we settled on Y in the use chart for Nantucket Vacation Rentals with the following pretty strict restrictions. So instead of making everybody operate in a situation where they could only rent one day less than they were living in their house, which would be a true accessory use, and you'll see that in Article Two. We decided on creating strict, tight regulations around a yes for something that is not a, a short-term rental but is a Nantucket Vacation Rental. It's a new thing. So, if I misspoke, I hope one of the folks that, that was part of the group, um, sets me straight. Also, I just want to say, everybody who participated, even the Nantucket Neighborhoods first folks, was great to work with, and even though they didn't endorse this, um, it's their right. And, uh, I, it doesn't make them bad people. They're, they're good people, they care about the island, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Allerhand?
Yes, I'm not, I don't want to speak about the merits, I just want to talk about what I think is some loose language in, uh, Paragraph Two. I understand that eight years is really, uh, aimed at the corporate interests, but the way I read it, I think I can make a reasonable case that during those eight years, a, a corporate interest could actually increase their portfolio over those eight years. You don't say that they cannot increase it, all you say is they can operate more than one during those period of time. Now, I understand, at least I believe, that the people who wrote this do not, will want, do not want to allow these kind of corporations to increase their portfolio, and I think you should add a couple of words to make that point. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. My name is Pamela Perrin, and I'm a retired pension and employee benefits lawyer. I'm also the sponsor of Article Five, which intends to deal with the issue of investor-owned short-term rentals. My family has been here for 90 years, and I've had a home here for 25. I'm speaking tonight primarily to those of you who, like my family, are not in the short-term rental business. Our interests seem to be underrepresented here. I'd like to speak about property rights as a lawyer. There's been a lot of disinformation circulated about this topic. Many in the real estate business have argued that they have property rights to short-term rent, which are under threat, and Article One is needed to protect them. That is totally wrong. It is not their property rights which are under threat here, but ours. Article One will take away our property rights, that is, our right to enjoy the peace and quiet of our homes in a residential neighborhood, a right that's been central to Nantucket zoning laws for over 50 years. Our zoning laws, as zoning laws are intended to do, separate commercial and residential activity. Today, I don't have the right to operate a cement plant next to your home, and you don't have an unrestricted right to operate an unregulated commercial business next to mine. If we adopt this article and put a Y in the use chart, that will change. Article One is an extreme power play by those who short-term rent for their personal profit that will take away our property rights. I urge you to preserve and protect the balance of rights between commercial and residential activity that we've always had in our zoning code, and vote no on Article One. No should mean no, even if we have to do it for the fifth time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. DeCosta?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I stood in front of this board, I think, two years ago, looked Matt's feet in the eye and said, "There's no way you're going to take away my rights with my property." I actually support this article. This is a good common ground. The, the reason I know that is because both extreme sides hate it. You know, we're, we're going to be back here every year until we get something passed. Just, I've, I've heard a lot of things tonight. One, there's going to be 6,000 new, uh, short-term rentals. There's already people in those houses, folks. Whether there's a renter in it or the owner in it, there's somebody in the house. My neighbor rented her house this year for two weeks, I didn't even know it. There was just a different car in the driveway. Seven or eight weeks of rentals, or eight turnovers means only eight-week rentals, or eight-weekend rentals. It doesn't mean 16 rentals like things are doing now. I mean, people have rented houses in Nantucket forever. I don't care what my neighbor does. There's bylaws in this town about noise and trash and garbage and crazy parties. They affect, they're the same whether it's a renter or a homeowner. There are some neighbors I've had that I prefer to have a renter than the neighbor. Why don't we just pass this thing once and for all? It's a good compromise, these guys have done a lot of work on it, and let's get on with it.
Thank you. Mr. Kitchener? And I'll come back up to you, Mr. Turkot.
Well, I'm not sure how to follow that, but, um-
Don't try, don't try.
So, John Kitchener again, um, had a hand in developing Article One. A lot's been said already tonight, and perhaps a little bit more to come, I don't know. Uh, and I'm not going to repeat any of that. But what I would ask everybody is to please consider this question. Is Article One a reasonable compromise? I'm a little short, thank you. Is Article One a reasonable compromise that can be built on at future town meetings? For sure, it does not give anyone, um, all of what they want, that is for sure. But it's a start, though, it's a start, and it gives most people some of what they ask for. Isn't really, given the polarization situation we're in, isn't that about, um, the best we can do at this moment? It's, seems to me, it's, it's, it's reasonable to get some kind of compromise. You know, this is the fourth time STR regulation has been on the town meeting warrant. Forgive me for saying this, but the town meeting has become a merry-go-round for STR articles. And isn't it time to stop that and just move forward? To do what's best for our island and our community, wouldn't it be better to compromise tonight? Not next town meeting, tonight, and meet in the middle? Let's move on from the polarized situation that just seems to get worse and worse every year. I ask you, please, give compromise a chance and vote for yes on Article One. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Turkot?
Thank you, Sarah. My name is RJ Turkot. I work for the Nantucket Land and Water Council as a Nantucket waterkeeper, and I'm going to be using this time tonight to read a statement from our board president, Lucy Lesk, who is not able to be here with us this evening. She's been a year-round resident since 1979, so, here goes. Fellow citizens and property owners, I'm sorry I could not be here at this meeting in person to listen and vote at this crucial moment in Nantucket's history, a moment when we're all trying to work towards a solution that will serve the island, its people, its resources, for the next generation, if not century. We're fortunate to benefit from the foresight and hard work of our predecessors who approved zoning legislation in years past that guided our decisions as individuals and as a community. If not for those bylaws, Nantucket would look and feel very different today. Unfortunately, we're now addressing a set of bylaws, or lack thereof, that did not anticipate the confluence of environmental, economic, and social factors we face today. I firmly believe it is not in Nantucket's best interest to tailor our bylaws to accommodate every interest, most particularly the pressure to extract the maximum amount of dollars from every square inch of land. It is in Nantucket's best interest to start abiding by common sense to strike a balance between economic and environmental impact. Continuing to incentivize intensive development by supporting Article One will have disastrous consequences for our already compromised water quality, air quality, environmental health, and infrastructure. We need to make the tough decisions as a community to accept that unlimited development is not an option. Our economy will adjust, our environment will not. There are bigger problems ahead that we'll need to tackle. Let's agree to make the right choice for the future of our island. Voting down Article One and approving the positive motion for Article Two are the first steps. Thank you very much, Lucy.
Thank you. The woman up at the back?
Hi, thank you, um, very much. My name is Audra Hicks. I don't know what the official, um, term is, but I didn't know if we could call a right to vote on this.
Oh, you want to move the question?
Yes, yeah, it's what you said.
So that's not-
Yeah, thank you, I just, I knew there was something proper.
That's not debatable, so, is there a second to the motion to move the question? Okay. So this motion takes a two-thirds vote. If you don't want to continue talking about Article One as moved by the Planning Board, as amended, um, by Mr. Murphy, then you would, you would vote yes, and we'd end debate, we'd go right to a vote on Article One. If you want to keep talking about Article One, um, then you would vote no, and we'd go back to the discussion on Article One as amended by Mr. Murphy. So, voting is open, it's one for yes, two for no. So I didn't say earlier, Chantot's, uh, Chantot Blas Murphy is running the high school gym behind me. She's got a, a fair crowd in there, actually, at this point. The CPS gym remains empty. Mr. Saperstein was available to step in there, and we'll be on-call in the event I keel over at some point during this meeting. Which we hope won't happen. So, on the motion to move the question. Whoa. Um, yes, 809. No, 73. That motion is adopted, and we will go directly to a vote. Now let's be really clear, because we had some issues about this last time. We're going to go right to a vote on Article One. What you're voting on is the substance of Article One. It's Article One as printed in the warrant, as moved by Mr. Iverson as Chair of the Finance Committee, and as amended by Mr. Murphy. The other amendments were not adopted. So it's the main motion made by Mr. Iverson, as amended by Mr. Murphy. A yes vote will adopt that motion, a no vote will defeat that motion. It does require a two-thirds vote. It's one for yes, two for no. If you have any questions at all, jump up and say point of order. Otherwise, voting is open, one for yes, two for no, two-thirds vote. As printed in the warrant and amended by Mr. Murphy. Okay, on the motion. I have to write this down. Yes, 416. No, 472. That motion is not adopted. Okay. Article Two. Okay, Article Two starts on page six, continues to page seven. The Planning Board motion was moved to take no action. That motion was supported by the Finance Committee. I do have a motion from Ms. Lepri, is that right? Okay. And, that motion is what's printed in the warrant with the changes in cross-out. I'd ask for your consent to waive the reading. You want me to read it? Okay, good. All right, is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. Ms. Lepri, you have five minutes, and it probably would be a good idea, I don't know if people- And it probably would be a good idea, I don't know if people have a handout of this, but it might be a good idea to tell people what you're proposing.
That's exactly what I plan to do. So, first, I just want to apologize that this is the last-minute thing that not everyone was able to read beforehand. What I'm going to tell you about is basically how I read this article as saying for Nantucket. And I will try and be quick, because I am paying a babysitter. So, Article One was very complicated to me, and I'm ready to move on. I know it's been a long four years of STR talk and really no perfect answers. So, my name is Mary Lepri, as you said, and it's pretty simple to me what this says. And I don't really, I think zoning is not my forte. An article similar to this with similar provisions has already been approved by the Attorney General, and it was actually approved at town meeting on the other island. West Tisbury on the Vineyard approved these STR regulations by 92%, which is, I think, more than anything probably ever passes here. Now, I know I'm not alone in this room when I say that I hate to lose to the Vineyard in anything. Doesn't matter what it is. However, they were able to come to a common ground, and I think that we can too with this article. And to be honest, I think that we would be busting them, because they only passed a general bylaw, and this is a zoning article, which, as I learn about zoning, has a lot more teeth. So, wouldn't we all like to beat the Vineyard tonight? So, here are my plain and simple thoughts on how I understand this article. This article requires an STR owner or immediate family member to spend a grand total of 30 days in a calendar year. Not consecutive, 30 days over a year in their STR home. Who are immediate family members? Your spouse, your parents, your grandparents', children, siblings. Seems like a pretty good deal for the owner's family as well. The 30-day requirement does not violate the dormant commerce clause. I guess there's been a lot of lawyers that have gone in on this and the Attorney General. So, I would take that this is Massachusetts, not Palm Springs, and the Vineyard is, last I checked, part of Massachusetts. So, I think that's good for us. An owner can STR their home up to one day less than their occupancy use, which is really the true Nantucket tradition. So, if you or a family member live in your family, in your home, 160 days a year, you can STR it for 159 days a year. This article, to me, is a win-win. It sets up some regulations, yet also protects the Nantucket tradition and preserves the accessory use in the land use chart. That's the A. I'm still a big fan of the A in the use chart. But I also think a lot of that is, can be very confusing as I learn more about it. Finally, each person can only own one STR and may only STR one dwelling at a time on a lot. So, you can live in your cottage and rent out your house, or vice versa. You just can only STR one. So, if you have two houses, but you don't live here year-round, you could long-term rent one and STR the other. Finally. The purpose of this article is to not take away property rights. It's about preserving the future of Nantucket. Let's stop the commercialization of our island and do all that we can to safeguard our neighborhoods. There's a limit to what the island can sustain, and we may have passed that already. Let's all pass Article Two and beat the Vineyard with these small first steps and get going on the rest that needs to be done. Thank you. Let's all vote yes on Article Two.
Thank you.
I cede the rest of my time to Charity Benz.
50 seconds to answer questions. Okay. All right. I see no hands. I see no questions. Mr. DeCosta? Who's, how are they going to track who's in the house? That's the question, Ms. Benz. How are you tracking who's in the house?
How am I what?
Tracking who's in the house. Go ahead, Mr. DeCosta.
Please, please read.
How are you going to track how long a homeowner's in the house? How long a tenant's in the house? Are we going to have to have ankle bracelets? I mean, Christ.
Well, I think that's sarcastic, but that's.
This is, this is great, because I'll just say I was in the house 180 days. I'm going to run 179. How are you going to prove I wasn't? Or I was? I don't know how you're going to do it.
Provision, let me point to the provision two, which lays out the paperwork that would be needed. Everybody.
I'm not telling you where I am every day of my life so that I can do something.
Well, let's not have cross-talk.
I'm not going to argue with you. There are provisions for people who do short-term rent to supply paperwork under Chapter 123. And these, this, the paperwork is rather simple. It's, with the exception of providing copies of the contracts with the owner's, you know, the renter's name redacted. Everything that's requested is what a short-term renter who declares income has to supply on their Schedule E for the federal government. There is a provision under Section Two that requires everybody who declares income from a short-term rental to declare the number of residential days that they are there, and the number of days that the property is rented. Now, perhaps people don't comply with IRS. I think that's a rather foolish thing, if that's the case. I have a short-term rental in Maine, and that's exactly what I do. I keep track of it.
Thank you, Mr. Howard? Yeah? No, it's a ma, it's a motion. Because here's why. The recommendation of the planning board was not to adopt. So, Ms. Lepri made the motion herself, and her motion is within the scope of the article. So, what we're talking about is the motion, which is the text of Article Two with these changes that are in red. But that's, it's not an amendment. It's actually a main motion on Article Two. Go ahead, Mr. Howard.
Thank you. I would just like to agree with Mr. DeCosta and also to, with the Finance Board on this. I own a property in Palm Springs, and I can see why they've struck that. We certainly occupy it more than 30 days a year, and the spirit of that is held to. But the idea that someone can monitor that is really distressing. It probably does constitute a restraint of trade. I'd like to ask Town Council and possibly, you know, what he thinks the E and O guy would think if this were to be adopted, because it just doesn't strike me as something that's constitutional.
Go ahead, Mr. Giorgio. You've been quiet. We might as well.
Good evening, Madam Moderator. Through you to the previous speaker. So, there's been a lot of discussion over the last several months about residency requirements and whether they are constitution, constitutional. And I am well aware of the fact that the Attorney General approved a 30-day residency requirement in West Tisbury. But the important thing to keep in mind is that the Attorney General, General's review of a bylaw is limited to whether or not that bylaw is consistent with the Massachusetts Constitution and state law. The Attorney General does not make rulings as to whether a bylaw is consistent with the federal constitution. So, while it is quite possible that the Attorney General would approve this residency requirement, as she did in West Tisbury, that does not insulate the town from the rather robust body of case law in federal courts that have found these kinds of restrictions to be, to violate the dormant commerce clause of the U.S. Constitution. I can't say with certainty whether someone challenging that provision would prevail in federal court, but there have certainly been a myriad of cases, some saying yes, some saying no. It would subject the town to litigation. And, and while that's not a reason not to adopt something, I think that going forward with this residency requirement is something the town should think very carefully about, and in particular, whether there are other ways to achieve that goal without potentially running afoul of the United States Constitution.
Thank you. Ms. Cronin?
Yes, Denise Cronin, speaking as a private citizen. Two things I'd ask us to consider as a community. Do we really want to ask our, our neighbors for their tax returns so we can see how many days they're reporting on their documents? I don't think that's any of our business, honestly. It's one thing to report it to the federal government. It's another thing to report it to my, my neighbor, my next-door neighbor. Secondly, a lot of people may not want to invest in the stock market or money markets or whatever, and have decided for their financial future to have a rental property. Now, they can rent it year-round, or they can rent it seasonally as they like. But I also don't think as a community, it's really up to us to tell each other how to secure their financial future. So, I am asking you to not vote for Article Two.
Thank you. Ms. Benz?
I'd like to comment on what Ms. Cronin just said and correct her. I am not suggesting that people have to submit their tax returns for their application for renewal for a license to short-term rental. What I am suggesting is that it is a requirement of the federal government that people, taxpayers, do this. Most, I mean, people who are complying with the law will have those records, and they can self-certify that that is, you know, that they're, what they have done. That's why we have digital calendars. I do this all the time. And it's, it's very, very straightforward. And I think you're making a, an argument that in the day of technology makes no sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown?
Hi, Madam Moderator, Toby Brown. I came into tonight a lot like Mr. DeCosta. I was not for any of these articles at all. I thought, number one, actually, was a good compromise, even though I don't agree with people taking our property rights. So, I want everybody here to think to themselves right now, do you want to give the town in Nantucket, or whatever the government, the rights to your property? Some of you might, we're all getting older here. You might need to go to the island home or something like that. And the only way you can support yourself to get in the island home is for your kids and grandkids to rent that house. And you're just going to say, no, you've got to live in this house for X amount? This is total craziness that anybody wants to give up their property rights. Excuse me, I'm speaking. Thank you. No, it's not. How is that incorrect?
Please, please don't go back and forth with.
Well, actually, yes. Please do not interrupt me again. So, yes. How, why would anybody want to give up their rights? We have health codes. We have laws on the books about barking dogs, noise, this, that. But no, we're just going to go after the short-term rentals. I got a, I have a neighbor that lives a couple houses down from me. I hear the dog 24/7. Guess what? It's not a short-term rental. So, stop picking on the whole short-term rental BS. And to be honest with you, the ones that are short-term rentals are very quiet in the wintertime, because they're not here. And, and then this whole, this whole, oh, if we get rid of short-term rentals, we're going to open up so much housing, and then property's just going to, the price of property's going to go way down, and everything's going to be great. Sorry. I vote no on this. Don't let them take your property rights. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allerhand?
There seems to be two questions here. One is, how do you enforce the residential requirements? And second of all, whether it's constitutional? As far as whether, the first one, how do you enforce it? Instead of worrying about how many days you spend in your home, why don't we just say that anybody that's entitled to vote at these meetings is considered to be, the person is a resident at his home? We don't have to worry about how many days. If you can vote, then you're considered to be the resident in your home. As far as whether it's constitutional or not, the, we don't know. And I think that's not a reason not to go forward. I think you can make a reasonably good argument that it is constitutional. So, those are my suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Longanker?
Regarding the federal income tax return in the Schedule E, what you report on that is the use of the property, not the occupancy of the property. They are not the same. For instance, my accountant advised me that if I had a property that was available to rent, then their use was rental, even if there was nobody in it. So, it is not equivalent to, as, for what you report on your Schedule E, to determine how many days the property was occupied or by who.
Thank you. Which, which one of you wishes to go first?
I just wanted to comment on what Mr. Brown said.
All right, Ms. Lepri?
Sorry, because it actually says for the purpose of this section, only immediate family members include the owner's spouse and/or parents, grandparents', children, brothers' and/or sisters. So, if someone had to go into the island home and you needed to S, your children needed to STR the home, they could. Because this says 30 days, but they, somebody would have to visit. They might have to visit you for 30 days out of a year in the island home, which I would hope that our family members would. So, your family could STR the house. They would just have to come and see their family member in the island home for 30 days out of a calendar year.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Peel?
Thank you. Excuse me. Matthew Peel, member of Nantucket Neighbors First and, and the Short-Term Rental Work Group. I just want to put people's minds to rest a little bit. We're not here trying to take away people's property rights. We're not here telling you what you should or shouldn't do. We are trying to protect Nantucket and its neighborhoods from the exploitation of investors and frankly, people with more money than the people that we need in our community for this island to survive. That is our mission. That is our goal.
Please don't do that.
We want to protect the neighborhoods on this island. We want people to rent out their houses. We want all of that. We want to protect the economy, and I don't want to base it off of July and August, because that's what's happening right now. Rentals are down. From what I've heard, that the shoulder season is abysmal right now. People are going to Europe. People are going everywhere else. Nantucket's overpriced. We need to rein it in a little bit. And the way we do that is by stepping in and saying enough is enough, because we still want to have a year-round community on this island. I don't want to see this island go just to a seasonal, summer-only economy, and that's where we are headed right now. And we also have to remember, we are in a construction bubble right now. Communities without STR regulations, there was a study that was done by the Harvard Business Review that shows communities without STR regulations see a 26% increase in building permits being pulled. That is fact. I want to see this community survive long into the future. I want my kids to have teachers that can teach them through, all the way through high school. And right now, every year, it's getting harder and harder and harder. Please vote yes.
Thank you. I'll go to the gentleman behind you.
John Pendrose, thank you. The 30-day occupancy requirement establishes a clear intent of the Nantucket community as it relates to the STR issue. This is a good first step. If future clarification is needed, it will build upon this intent. Thank you.
Ms. Benz? Or, no, I'm sorry. Whoever's up at that microphone is, yep, sorry.
Elizabeth Carol Fuller for Kelly Road. At an earlier town meeting, I felt like Nantucket, its wild spaces, moors, beaches, ponds, forests, and wildlife needed speaking up for, and it still does. Nantucket was built upon the backs of whales, and now we've run out of whales, and we're devouring open space. Shel Silverstein wrote The Giving Tree, which very much applies to our situation. And if you don't know the story, every day, the boy would come to the tree to eat her apples, swing from her branches, lie down her trunk, and the tree was happy. The boy grew older. He began to need more from the tree. He needed money. He needed wood to build a house. The tree gave and gave and gave unconditionally, until the only thing left was her stump, which he invited the old man to rest upon. We have been hacking limbs off Nantucket for far too long, and we might not have reached this stump, but we aren't too far off from killing the tree. It might be already dead. While there's still a fact of widespread development and destruction of our open spaces going on, tonight, I'm thinking about the quality of our community. going on, tonight I'm thinking about the quality of our community life on Nantucket, and the people that have left, and the many more that are packing their bags by the end of this month or the next, because it has just become too hard to live here. What many love about Nantucket, or loved, was its natural beauty, but also its unique and quirky character and its characters. When I moved here at the end of the 80s, a poor school teacher, me, who was making $28,000 a year with a master's, could still find an affordable winter rental and make do in the summer, living with a family member or in a friend's attic. An actor, and I'm talking about real people here, could get waitressing gigs to support herself while doing community theater and leading an island Shakespeare troupe. An artist could work as a gardener during the weekday and pursue his art. A community of livaboards, of which I was one, populated the harbor in the summer, taking advantage of waterfront living, cheap living, while building small businesses from scratch. And I can think of many Nantucket businesses, painting, diving, that's my husband, interior design, catering, carpentry, Cisco Brewery even, that these same livaboards built.
Thank you.
And they only exist here because Nantucket used to be a place that had to make room for all sorts of interesting and enterprising people who set about a life. And in the process, they cleaned your house, worked at your nonprofits, cooked and served your breakfast, put out your fires, weeded your gardens, taught your children, entertained you. All of that to say, there's no room at the inn, all these people are leaving, they can't, the people that work these jobs cannot afford to come here.
Thank you.
So we're cutting off our feet. So I would support too.
Thank you. Yes. Go ahead. I'll come to you next, but go ahead.
Okay. Good evening. Thank you. My name is Peter Kahn, and I rise to speak as vice chair of the Advisory Committee of Non-Voting Taxpayers, to oppose the residency requirements as currently set forth in Article 2. My wife and I have been on this island, been owner of a home here for over 15 years, and we're involved in a number of civic organizations. In addition, I'm a lawyer, and have worked on the short-term rental issue here for some time, having served, whoops, there we go, having, thank you, having served for the past several years on the Short-Term Rental Study Group, appointed by the town, and having advised those who worked on the current compromise as proposed in Article 1. Article 2 as written, with its 30-day residency requirement to even be allowed to rent at all, as well as its tying of the number of days one can rent to the number of days one is resident in the property, would likely violate the dormant commerce clause of the United States Constitution. The courts have long held that a local government may not discriminate in interstate commerce by treating in-state and out-of-state economic interests differently. If they do so, it is considered per se illegal, invalid. The cases have held that the only way such a law could be found constitutional is if it advances a legitimate local purpose that cannot be adequately served by reasonable nondiscriminatory alternatives. Here, the purpose articulated by the bylaws proponents is the need to simply reduce the number of short-term rentals on Nantucket. But that can be achieved by a nondiscriminatory alternative, for example, by placing a cap on the total number of STRs. Thus, the town can expect a legal challenge with all its attendant costs and time, money, and disruption, in which it will likely lose if the residency requirements of Article 2 remain as proposed. Some supporters of Article 2 say that the dormant commerce clause concerns are not an issue because the Massachusetts Attorney General approved a similar bylaw in West Tisbury earlier this year. But as Town Council Georgio correctly points out tonight and in his legal memorandum to the Select Board dated May 15th, the Massachusetts Attorney General's review of a bylaw is limited to whether the bylaw in question is consistent with state law. The state attorney general does not typically analyze a bylaw based on federal law or federal constitutional grounds. In this regard, it is noteworthy that the Massachusetts Attorney General's opinion on the West Tisbury bylaw specifically did not address the federal dormant commerce clause at all. It is for this one reason alone, the unnecessary and unconstitutional discrimination between residents and non-residents, that we on the Advisory Committee of Non-Voting Taxpayers oppose Article 2 and respectfully urge a no vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McNabb, did you have your hand up?
I guess I have to hold this down. Well, I've studied this for about four years now, I've listened to all sides, and I think I can probably make a good argument for everyone. But what I think we really need to do is, there was a great letter from Mr. Sanders about, it's just time to vote for something. That was a great letter, because all we do is talk about what's wrong, what are the risks. I'm willing to support Article 2 for simple reasons. I understand the problems of our non-residents, but it protects what I continually have heard. How do we protect Nantucketers? How do we protect the tradition of renting? And this article does. The other thing I like about it, it is simple. There was a lot of question here before about, well, we can't enforce provisions of Article 2. But if you go back to Article 1, I'm not sure we could enforce those provisions as well. We're just going to have to take some risks. And as far as the legal issues, I'm a physician, I'm not a lawyer. But my God, what's happening to everybody today? The lawyers are running the world. I mean, the zoning board gets sued, my little Board of Health has gotten sued. I mean, it's getting to the point where I think, we're not, we don't have control any, oh, I'm sorry, I'm going to start make a speech, I apologize for that. I apologize. I think it's worth the risk, and I support Article 2.
Thank you. Sir? Go ahead.
I'd like to call the question.
Okay. All right. So you know that's not debatable, requires a two-thirds vote, it will end debate. If you want to continue talking about Article 2, you'd vote this down. If you want to go right to a vote on Article 2, you'd vote yes. It's 1 for yes, 2 for no, and voting is open. That motion is adopted. So now we're going to go right to a vote on the main motion on Article 2. Now, to be clear, what you're voting on is the motion made by Ms. Benz as printed on the screen. It's within the scope of Article 2, but not exactly what's printed in the warrant. It's the motion that's on the screen. A yes vote will adopt that motion. A no vote will defeat the motion. It does require a two-thirds vote. It's 1 for yes, 2 for no, and voting is open.
There seems to be some questions.
Okay, come to the microphone if there's an issue.
We're not sure, we're not sure what we're voting on. Yes vote is on the amendment only, or is a yes vote on the article?
There's no amendment. So this, no amendment. This is the, this is the main event on Article 2. So a yes vote will adopt the motion on Article 2. A no vote will defeat it. You have a minute, you can change your vote around if you need to.
Sarah, to be clear, it's to adopt the one on the screen, not the one in the warrant.
That's correct. I'm just going to give you a little bit more time in case anybody has any questions, because you can change your vote back and forth if you decide that you made a mistake. So a yes vote will adopt the motion that's on the screen, that's the motion made by Ms. Benz. No amendments, just a straight-out motion, and no vote will defeat that motion. Sorry. Okay. A yes, 478, no, 394. That motion is not adopted. Article 4 received a negative recommendation. Starts on page 9 of the warrant, continues to page 10. The planning board motion was moved to take no action on the article. Mr. Sanders, who's the article sponsor, is making a positive motion?
Correct.
And that motion is, as shown on the screen, and is that essentially what's printed in the warrant with some changes?
It's, it's stripped down from what's in the warrant, and people who are leaving now may want to stay.
I don't know why people leave when this thing is coming up that they could vote on, but that's okay. You're going to what?
I'm just bringing it up.
The red line?
I'm trying.
So this meeting, just so you know, does present some technical challenges. In addition to having two rooms set up, this is our first meeting without Mary and Al Novissimo, and so we're, we're all learning a new system, and I think these guys are doing a great job. I just really appreciate it. Yeah, we couldn't, we couldn't do it without them. Far Away Productions, right? Jeremy White. We've got NCTV, and we have some other people involved as well, and we'll, we'll have the thing of credits. But anyway, so, Mr. Sanders, your motion. Why don't you, why don't you explain it? We'll get it on the floor, and then you can take a little time to talk about it.
Okay. So this motion is essentially Article 4 that's in the warrant with the, with a lot of things stripped out. Why don't I just talk about what it is as opposed to what's been stripped out? Because I can't even remember anymore. But before I do that, I just want to apologize to everyone that you're seeing this for the first time. I was a proponent of Article 1 and a friend of Article 2's, which is why I didn't stand up and talk against it, but I wanted one of those to pass, and if they had passed, I would have called, I would have removed my call of this article. But here we are, folks. Here we are, a last-ditch effort to get something in zoning for short-term rentals, okay? Article 4 leaves the existing short-term rental market alone. Anybody who's running a short-term rental now has no changes to the way they operate their business. Article 4 only limits new owners, okay? If you're a new owner, you get one short-term rental and three turnovers in July and August. That's it. That's Article 4, okay? If you have more than one property right now, keep going. Keep doing what you're doing. If you forget to renew your license, or you run afoul of Chapter 123, or you sell your property, it goes back to 1. Otherwise, keep going forward. Does Article 60 that we passed in the spring do what this does? It really doesn't. There's something, and I'm sure Pamela Perrin is going to talk about this next, but there's something called a real estate investment trust, and trusts are allowed in Article 30, or Article 60. A real estate investment trust is a way to pool large amounts of money to buy lots of homes. So this article basically says, you can't buy lots of homes. And it's a deterrent to somebody who's just here to make money, to look at Nantucket as an asset class, not as a community. We have enough money from people who love this island. We don't need to seek it from people who love money more than our community. If we pass Article 4, it may not seem like it does much, but if we pass Article 4, we get something into zoning, it ends the lawsuits that are going on, and it allows us to come back at later town meetings and make changes to Chapter 123 and make additional regulations that restrict short-term rentals. If you were one of the people, one of the 52% that voted yes on Article 1, you still have a yes yet to use. If you were one of the 400 and, 398 people or 473 people that voted yes on Article 2, you still have a yes to use right now. Please vote yes on Article 4. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Did you have a handout, Mr. Sanders, of any sort?
I set it up so that it would go live on islandvoter.com at 5 o'clock, so if anybody has a phone, go to islandvoter.com. It's the first piece on the website. I also have, there's also a slide that I offered that, that explains it.
Oh, do we have a slide?
See, three turnovers.
Oh, I thought that was toast.
No, no, they're turnovers.
I see, okay.
Oh, by the way, I just want to mention that Article 4 is, is sponsored by Nantucket Bake Shop. My brother-in-law is not going to be happy about that.
Are those apple, raspberry, lemon? What have you got going there?
They are actually apple turnovers. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
So, Mr. Howard?
Yes, three slices of pizza, please, to go. I'm not sure. I would, again, point out from personal experience, having owned a property in Palm Springs for some years, I know this is not Palm Springs, but they've done a pretty damn good job, and there are a few things that are all interchanging and all a bit of a Jenga, Tetris thing, and unfortunately, the motions here, 59, 60, and so on and so forth, in my opinion anyway, have created a circumstance where it's just not possible for the interlocking things that they've got that really tighten it up. However, one of the things that did happen is a result of them having limited neighborhoods, which is not really being done here, but they did put quotas in on certain neighborhoods. There was a lot of litigation pending against that, that again, I wouldn't want to get involved with, but again, it's, it's the same kind of things that Mr. DeCosta mentioned and that the Town Council also mentioned earlier, where a neighborhood is quoted out. The, the problem that came as a result of that, and it does, it doesn't, it does actually impact here, was that the people who are current owners, which so many of us are, so many of us who are planning perhaps to retire... so many of us who are planning perhaps to retire, to either downsize, or as Ms. Williams said and other people have mentioned, it had a hell of an impact on the property values. It just clobbered everything. It created, a lot of stuff just sat dead. The stasis out in that market has just been absolutely wild. It just hasn't moved. Because it's created so much uncertainty, and it has created a variety of tiered systems as far as what the valuations are. And it does not just affect the people that are coming in from the outside. So, again, three turnovers. Why? Why are turnovers suddenly the holy grail here? Dude, there's only one more car. They turn the house over three times. They clean the house. Okay? And then they leave. And then somebody else comes in. So it just strikes me as that there's an awful lot of grasping of straws here to find something to hook this all on. Again, the interlocking nature of a consensual policy that I happen to be quite familiar with is not necessarily what's going on here. And I don't want to go into a whole lot of detail, but I tell you what. New people coming in are only allowed three. Well, I still don't understand what the hell's wrong with the turnovers, but the fact that they're only allowed three, again, sets a two-tiered system, and it's going to fall on the people who actually own here now, who might potentially sell their house.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Benz?
I would like to urge this legislative body to postpone further consideration of short-term rentals until next annual town meeting. I think we have exhausted this subject this evening. And I have worked with Grant, I've worked with Medfee, I've worked with everybody on the subcommittee. But I think we have a sense of what the people who are in this room feel about short-term rentals. And I think we have to do a better job next time. Thank you.
Thank you. So on Mr. Sanders' motion, oh, yes.
Madam Moderator, a question through the chair to the proponent, please. Since we haven't had an opportunity to read this, and as someone has pointed out, it's very difficult to see it now. The question is, is there a residency requirement in Article Four?
No, there is no residency requirement in Article Four.
Thank you.
And I also just want to point out that the three changes in occupancy is a deterrent for people who want to get into the market and make a lot of money in the summertime period. Right? It doesn't keep them from renting in the shoulder season. It's just a deterrent for people who want to look at Nantucket as an investor class.
Thank you. Mr. Peel?
Thank you. And Matthew Peel. Again, I just wanted, one couple of things I just want to point out in this article, that there is, this is a Y in the use chart. And, you know, we're obviously against that. But I'd like also to echo what Charity just said as well. As a member of Nantucket Neighbors First, you know, I'm pledging to this community to, again, give it another crack. And, you know, it doesn't have to be select board-sponsored, but I'm willing to work with Grant. I'm willing to work with Mr. Maury. I'm willing to work with Mr. Iverson. I'm willing to work with anybody in this room that wants to talk about short-term rentals. And so is Nantucket Neighborhoods. Because we want to protect the sanctity of this community. And so I would, we are going to give it another shot in May. And I think that that last vote said a lot about the way this community is leaning. And so, you know, but we want to hear more feedback. We want to hear from more people. And so if Mr. Sanders, you know, I know Mr. Sanders put this up there to kind of give it the last-ditch effort, but we're also going into winter, and not a lot happens in the wintertime. And so I urge us to either vote no or shelve this, then let's pick this up and craft a good article with this community in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Perrin?
Yes, I can't really see what's on the screen, but if I compare it to what's in the warrant article, does it still have, it still has the insertion of a Y?
Can you put the microphone down closer to your mouth and say that again, please?
Yes, but it's falling out of the stand, so I'm trying not to drop it on the floor.
Okay. Well, you can take it out of the stand if you want.
Yeah, but then I'll drop it. And if we are going to continue consideration of this article, I would like to amend it to strike that provision because I do not-
Which provision is that?
I believe it's two, which amends Section 139-7A.
And Mr. Sanders-
Inserting a designation Y in all columns except blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, Mr. Sanders has amended that. So it says amend Section 139-7A use chart by inserting, crossing out accessory and inserting short-term rental between, quote, tertiary dwelling and apartment building in the use column, and inserting the designation N in all columns.
Yes, but am I incorrect that that essentially does what Article One attempted to do? I'm confused. And if it does, I want to propose an amendment, if we're going to continue to consider this, to strike that. Because I don't see the necessity for it, given the other provisions of the article, for all the reasons that we said in the discussion about Article One.
Okay. Mr. Giorgio, do you want to address that question?
Madam Moderator, I don't think it's possible to strike Section Three altogether. There has to be a designation in the use chart. That's why we're here tonight. Whether it's defined as a short-term rental, whether it's defined as a Nantucket vacation rental, you have to have a designation in the use chart. Or, and if you don't, you haven't really accomplished anything here. So I would not recommend just deleting that by putting nothing in the use chart at all. You're going to be, you're going to be back to square one.
So this article puts no in the use column for short-term rental, but yes for Nantucket vacation rental, except in the CI zone? Is that correct? Which has an N?
Yes, that's correct. That's exactly what was in Article One. So that's not any different than what was proposed originally in Article One.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm Maureen Phillips and have not been directly involved with the STRs. But as a recovering lawyer, I would not advise any client to go forward with something which they cannot have read all of it. It's not clear what it's going to be doing. And this is such a critical issue. And tonight, and I heard people like, oh, for God's sake, we have to come to this again next May. Well, we did get a majority vote on Article Two. We didn't get the necessary two-thirds. But there is clearly, in my mind, then, a sense of what we want to do. And just to vote for something else tonight, just to say, oh, we're done. Well, we're not going to be done. And especially to do something within the zoning code which is really hard to undo, what you do with that, I think would be a real mistake tonight. Please, don't let your fatigue on this really important motion lead you to making, to voting for something that we haven't had a chance to look at and is apparently, partially like something which was overwhelmingly defeated as Article One. It just, you know, we want to try and be rational about this. And getting things at the last minute makes it very, very difficult. So I think very strongly we should vote against this article and just think about accepting the fact that we may, we're going to have to go back because this is really important. We are not Palm Springs, for God's sake, which also has extra land if people can't afford to work there, living right in Palm Springs. You can drive from elsewhere. We don't have that. We are different. And you can't use examples from areas that have nothing to do with how Nantucket works or its history as some kind of, you know, support for doing something that allegedly worked in, well, they stopped using in Palm Springs. I just, it doesn't make any sense to me. So please vote against this.
Thank you. Yes?
Hi. Campbell Sutton again. As I said at the beginning, I really have, and I have said this before, adding these amendments when no one has had an opportunity, not just to read them, this isn't about can I read the words? It's about can I comprehend this? Can I figure out how this is going to affect me? Such as Article Two. Okay, I read what was in the warrant. There was a new article put in. My problem with the article, I live with a 93 going on 94-year-old person. You have no idea what your life challenges may be, where you may need to rent, and you may not be able to live in the house, or, you know, anything like that. And so I felt Article Two was very restrictive and on eventualities that none of us can actually speak to. And so I was a yes on one. And if it was no on one, I was a yes on four. And now you've made four like, one, you can't see it and read it in pink. Two, it's really hard to figure out what the whole thing is saying when you can only see parts of it. I just am so disappointed, honestly, that there's a proposal to move this so that the same people can keep talking about the same thing. And still, when we get to May, can they agree that they're going to only bring us one article? Or are we going to be back here where we have six articles to consider? Because once they've all decided that they're going to chat and come together, they're going to go into their separate alleys and go, well, I can't take that one piece, so I'm going to do my own thing. It has done nothing to help the situation for anybody, and I'm sorry for that. So I just wanted to say that about the amending and everything. It just is very distracting. And obviously, many of the people here agree with that part of what I said, anyway.
Mrs. Ray?
Yeah, I give a point of order that I don't know about anybody else here, but I can't read this to understand it, to comprehend it. This is not fair.
I think we're just getting really redundant, so maybe we should just vote. Do you want us to have a final word, Mr. Sanders, at the mic? I feel like I need to, I owe it to you to defend your position, but then we're going to vote on this.
That's okay. I just want to say that in the springtime, I stood up and I said I would jump into this and try to help. That's all I'm trying to do. And this article is nothing more than new people being restricted. Existing short-term rentals are not impacted unless they fail to renew their licenses. So it's not going to have an impact on anyone that's running a short-term rental right now. And it does allow us to make changes to Chapter 123 in the future. I'm happy to read the thing out loud if it would help.
No. I think, I think, I think people are ready to vote.
Right. Thanks, everybody.
Okay. So on the main motion made by Mr. Sanders, it's one for yes, two for no. Voting is open, requires two-thirds. So we have one more short-term rental conversation to have, and that's going to be on Article Five, which is next. So we're relearning some things, like the screen is great, but it's limited because you can only have so much on it and still have it be legible. Here's the vote. Yes, I got to write this down. Yes, 147. No, 607. That is not adopted. Yes, 147. No, 607. Not adopted. Article Five. Article Five starts on page 10 of the warrant, goes to page 11. The Finance Committee motion was to take no action. The sponsor, Pamela Perrin, has given us a motion on Article Five. Okay. Now, I think what we're going to do is I will, I will read this to you. I think it's the only way to do it. So I'm going to do that. Moved to amend. Move that Chapter 123 Short-Term Rentals of the Code of the Town of Nantucket be amended as follows. One, amend Section 123.2 definitions by substituting the following new definition for the existing definition of corporation. What's in the warrant is crossed out, and what's added is any entity organized under the laws of any state or country which is taxable as a corporation under the Internal Revenue Code, or which would be taxable thereunder as a corporation if it had become, if it had income subject to taxation under the Internal Revenue Code. Such entities shall include, without limitations, corporations, limited liability companies which are taxed as corporations, and so-called Massachusetts Business Trust, provided, however, that a limited liability company and an S corporation shall not be treated as corporations when every shareholder, partner, member is a natural person as established by documentation provided by the applicant as required at the time of registration and subsequently thereafter from time to time as required under regulations established under this chapter. Two, amend 123.2 definitions by inserting the following terms and definitions and inserting them in alphabetical order. Internal Revenue Code, the United States Internal Revenue Code of 1986 is amended. Partnership, any entity organized under the law of any state or country which is taxable as a partnership under the Internal Revenue Code, or which would be taxable thereunder as a partnership if it had income subject to taxation under the Internal Revenue Code. Such entities shall include, without limitation, general partnerships, limited liability companies which are taxed as partnerships, limited partnerships, and limited liability partnerships taxed as partnerships. Real Estate Investment Trust, any entity defined in Internal Revenue Code, Section 856. Three, amend 123.3 registration permitting prohibitions, inspection, and fees as follows. H, short-term rentals are prohibited in dwelling units owned by a corporation, partnership, real estate investment trust, or any similar entity which pools funds from investors and is engaged primarily in investment activity. Is that your motion?
Yes, it is, Madam Moderator.
All right. Is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. Ms. Perrin?
Thank you. You know, my name is Pamela Perrin. And as I mentioned before, I'm a retired pension and employee benefits attorney. During my career, I worked with investment companies who wanted access to the trillions of dollars in retirement savings plans. I'm sponsoring Article Five because there's one thing that Nantucketers agree on. We don't want to have commercial investment-owned short-term rentals. Last May, we tried to do something about that. In Article Six, we prohibited corporations from operating short-term rentals in the hope that we had solved that problem. Well, we didn't entirely. So I have sponsored Article Five as a simple technical amendment to fix a drafting problem with what we did in May. What Article Five fixes is that in law, as opposed to ordinary English, the word corporation means only one very specific type of commercial business.
word corporation means only one very specific type of commercial business. Left free to operate on Nantucket were other types of commercial businesses, such as real estate limited partnerships, beloved by private equity and hedge funds, and real estate investment trusts that Grant mentioned. These are often traded on major stock exchanges and are open to investors from all over the world. These types of businesses tend to attract more real estate investment dollars than corporations for tax reasons. So, what we did fix in May is only a very small part of a very large problem. The text of the article is on the screen, as you can see. It is legal boilerplate, so it looks complicated. But simply speaking, it just adds three definitions to and expands another in our zoning laws. So, let me tell you how it works in English. First, Article Five preserves the protection that Article 60 gave to properties held in family limited partnerships and estate planning trusts, so they remain eligible to be short-term rentals in the Nantucket tradition. Second, it adds to our zoning bylaws definitions of commercial limited partnerships and investment trusts like REITs, so they are also prohibited from operating short-term rentals. Finally, it includes a more comprehensive, standard definition of corporation. Adding these definitions will prohibit the most prevalent types of commercial businesses from operating short-term rentals on Nantucket. So, where did these definitions come from? I did not write them, but I know what standard definitions written by an experienced and expert professional should look like, so I went looking for some. And guess where I found them? I found them on Broad Street, in our land bank regulations, and in the Internal Revenue Code. These definitions are sophisticated, extensive, professional, and relevant. They've been used successfully for decades. We understand what they mean. Why is it important to do this? Well, off-island professional money managers, seeking attractive properties for their investors, look for top-tier vacation destinations and lucrative real estate returns. Does that sound like Nantucket has a big red target on its back? You bet. Just look at the real estate transactions data reported every week, showing the dark money floating into our real estate market and distorting it. That's what we're trying to stop. So, let's just get this done. Please vote yes on Article Five to send these off-island investors off-island for good.
May I ask you a question?
Sure.
Just a technical question about your language, because I'm confused.
Yep.
In the definition of corporation, you exempt out limited liability companies and S corporations where the shareholder, partner, et cetera, is a natural person.
If you, can you scroll down, please?
Sure. Up.
Down to the?
Yeah, we need to go further up and down. Yeah.
Down to the bottom?
Okay, now go down to the bottom. So, here's my, here's my basic-
What follows after "provided, however," is what Article 60 inserted, and I moved it. When I had to put corporation up, when I had to change corporation, I moved it up from the, from H, up there.
All right.
So, that is language. That is from Article 60. I did not change that.
Right. And here's my question about that. So, that makes sense to me, that you're exempting liability companies and S corporations from the definition of corporation if every shareholder, partner, or member is a natural person. But then, down in the definition of partnership, you say that such entities shall include, without limitation, general partnerships, limited liability companies which are taxed as partnerships, limited partnerships, and limited liability partnerships. And my understanding is that if you have a multi-member LLC, it is either taxed as a partnership or as a corporation. So, you're exempting it from corporation, but you're keeping it as a partnership. And then, in Section H, you're saying that partnerships can't operate short-term rentals. I don't know if you're following me, but-
I think it's quite technical, and if you'd like to suggest an amendment, fine.
I don't, I'm just trying to understand what you're, what you're doing, because I think that if you have a limited liability, like, if, if you and I had a limited liability company, we would be taxed as a partnership, and we would not be able to do a short-term rental. If that's your intention, that's what you're doing. And I just wanted to under, I was just trying to understand that.
No, what I'm trying to preserve is the protection that Article 60 gave to the word corporation. Now, if that needs to be inserted into the definition of partnership, I'm happy to do that.
I, I, I think, I think so.
Okay. This is why I didn't, I didn't write the definitions.
Yeah, I think so. I think you need to, to take that a limited liability company, when every share, where every member is a natural person.
So, take the "provided, however," that's in the definition of corporation, and insert it into the partnership.
Correct.
That's fine with me.
That's right. Will you accept that as a friendly amendment?
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay. All right. So, that's now your motion. Is there any discussion on that? Ms., oh, Ms. Dues?
Yes, and Dues. I would like to thank and commend Ms. Perrin for bringing this article. It's been a very curious discussion about corporation. Last May, when we approved the elimination of corporation from people who are allowed to own property here, people were going, oh, yay, this is so great. We fixed the problem of all these nasty commercial renters. Yay! And then, we get people up here and say, well, hang on a second. You know, we're all really good people, and it's, it's only that 2% that's the corporations that are so nasty. I have always said that focusing on corporations is not enough. There are so many different legal forms that investor money takes. It's really hard to stay in front of them. In fact, we probably can't. But, I think that Pamela has done a great job of at least kind of getting us a little bit of ahead of the kind of money and investment and, you know, fast in, fast out, that none of us want here. So, thank you, and please vote yes on this amendment, on this, what do we call it, article.
Okay. Thanks. I'm just trying, yes, Ms. Moore?
Through you, Madam Moderator. I'd like to ask Town Council to give us an opinion on whether or not this language conflicts with Article 60, which is already being considered by the Attorney General.
So, Madam Moderator, it certainly expands on what is before the Attorney General. I'm not certain it conflicts. I assume the Attorney General, once this is, if it's voted here tonight, will submit this to, oh, the town will submit this to the Attorney General for review, and I'm going to assume she's going to treat this as the, so to speak, the last word of town meeting on the subject, if that makes sense.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Howard?
Just one sentence question. Could someone from the Finance Committee possibly synopsize, since many of us who are not following this perhaps as closely as we should, don't know why the recommendation is there to take no action?
Ms. Cronell?
At the time of the discussion at the Finance Committee meeting review, we believed that this was actually excessive, not necessary, because Article 60 passed with the corporation, and it was just going to cause additional confusion. So, that's why we recommended take no action.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, and then I'll come down to you, Tom.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Moderator. I urge that we vote this down as a no. This was brought up, and the person who brought it up, no disrespect, who's a lawyer, had to have it corrected here at town meeting, and I mean no disrespect, but that just shows I don't think if, if lawyers don't understand it, I'm not sure how everybody else is, and it's just kind of a little too last minute, and I just urge we vote it down. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dixon?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Just a point on process to jump off Ms. Cronell's point about this proposed article, that in the short-term rental subgroup that we considered and came up with Article One, that we decided, or that the proponents of the articles decided to take a negative recommendation on anything in a general bylaw, except for this one. And so, with a possible comeback of other regulations in a general bylaw at a later date, so that, in a way, that would, not passing this would be in keeping, but that is up to the will of town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Coffin?
I just wanted to speak in favor of this Article Five, and I wanted to give you some, a report from the trenches. I live at 47 Union Street, which is now in what I consider to be a wreck of a neighborhood. There was a serious mistake made in which the zoning was changed from residential-commercial to residential. And when that happened, we lost all regulatory control, because all of the houses that became available became cover entities for short-term rentals that are held by larger institutions or different kinds of trusts. And these are all faceless entities, and our neighborhood has the problem of not being, not knowing how to function at all. Sometime in August, my husband came up in the morning, and he said, Liz, there's a strange man on the sofa on the first floor. Do you know him? And I said, no, escorted him out. It turned out he was a feckless young sod who was so drunk. He had walked in, his buddy, he had buddies who had wanted to abandon him, and they had brought him to my backyard. He'd gone through the hedges, into the door, and settled down on the sofa to sleep. When my husband woke him up in the next morning, he did not know where he was. He did not, he's, all he knew was that he had rented a place on Union Street. And we couldn't help him. But we, we let him go. But I felt, I said, this is, this is, this is a wreck of a neighborhood. It looks fine on the outside, but there's no way of anybody who comes and does their short-term rental in this neighborhood that they can recognize what is a rental house, what is a residence that people own it or present. And this unit obviously spent a fair amount of money, which I know-
Thank you.
-has gone to outside interests off-island. And we, the neighbors, are left to pick up the pieces. I wanted just to, I really want to concentrate on the idea of responsibility and accountability.
Okay, thank you.
And I urge everybody to vote to support this.
Thank you. Yes?
Deborah Nicholson. I just have a question. If we're keeping natural person in this part of it, but yet we've taken it out of Section H?
We're putting it back.
You're going to put it back into Section H?
We're working on that right now.
Okay, wonderful.
Okay, Ms. Benz? No. Ms. Malden?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Emily Malden, speaking for the Nantucket Land and Water Council. I just simply wanted to add that we support this article, because we do believe that it helps to clarify and strengthen the restrictions against corporate ownership that we all voted to incorporate into our general bylaw in May. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Benz?
First off, I'd like to tell Mrs. Coffin that a friend of mine on India Street had the identical experience. And, but she had her six-foot, seven-foot son-in-law in the house at the time, and he happily came down, picked up the man, and threw him into the hedges. So, it's, you're not, you're not alone. I would like to support this article in a night when we haven't been able to accomplish anything. And I think we could pass it and leave it up to the Attorney General to advise us if it's appropriate. I hope you will vote for this article.
Okay, so, I just want to point out, we did accomplish a couple of things. Before we go to a vote, I just want to make sure we have that language okay in the partnership section. Okay, so, whoops. There we go. So, we've just brought down that language, provided, however, that a limited liability company, when every shareholder, partner, member is a natural person, shall not be considered a partnership under this section. So, that brings that down from the corporation section. Okay, Ms. Carol?
Ms. Carol Fuller, I just wanted to say that an earlier speaker talked about community bullying. I think Nantucket community has been bullied enough by lawyers and developers and all the above, that we need to get tough. And this sounds like just starting with some definitions, so we're not wallowing around in stupid talk. I think we just pass that. That's just common sense.
Thank you. All right. I think you guys are ready to vote on this. Okay, and we're going to vote on the main motion made by Ms. Perrin with this one change and right at the bottom of the definition of partnership. A yes vote will adopt this motion. A no vote will defeat the motion. Because this is a general bylaw amendment, it requires only a majority vote. So, a yes vote will adopt the motion as made by Ms. Perrin with that one technical correction. A no vote will defeat that motion. One for yes, two for no. Voting is now open. Okay. Once we have this vote, we have five articles to go. Four are Mr. Maury's, 11, 12, 13, and 14, and then we have Ms. Rayport's Article 16. Voting is closed. On the motion, yes, 544. No, 153. That motion is adopted. Okay. Article 11, and would really appreciate people hanging in through Article 17, or 16 actually. Article 11 starts and ends on page 33. The Planning Board motion was not to adopt. The Finance Committee supported the Planning Board motion. Mr. Maury has given us a positive motion. It's basically to adopt Article 11 as printed in the warrant, and we do have a map that goes along with it. Is that your motion, Mr. Maury?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. Mr. Maury?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Good evening, everyone. I'm Stephen Maury, and I stand before you tonight to ask for your support in rezoning Cliff Williams' property at 44 Skyline Drive. His proposal, which is the same as my proposal for the property that we will discuss in the next article, aims to address a critical issue on Nantucket: housing for the very people who keep this island running. The proposed density is similar to what we've seen successfully implemented at Saichem's Path. This project- This project will not only meet community needs, but will do so at zero cost to the town. Cliff's property abuts Richmond Meadows Apartment Complex, and my property on Woodland Drive was highlighted in the Housing Production Plan as one of just a handful of ideal locations for housing development. By supporting these zoning changes, we can move forward with development that will benefit teachers, firefighters, police officers, health care workers, and other essential employees who are struggling to find housing on the island. Importantly, one hundred percent of the housing built on these properties will be for year-round occupancy. Thanks to deed restrictions recorded today, those restrictions will bind the properties in perpetuity. The challenges are real, and they are growing. As Police Chief Jody Casper wrote in an op-ed this June, "The biggest challenge facing our departments isn't from crime and crowds, it's from the cost of housing." Officers want to live here, and we need them to live here, but often they just can't stay. It has become increasingly challenging to retain newer officers on Nantucket for more than three or four years. Superintendent of Schools Beth Halid echoed those concerns last year, saying, "If I don't have viable housing for staff, then it will be very hard to have a school district that is able to function the way it should function and the way the children deserve." Our schools, our public safety, our health care services, and our community rely on the people we are losing every year due to housing costs. This project won't solve all of Nantucket's housing issues, but it's a significant step in the right direction. The restrictions filed today ensure that the property remains accessible, all the dwellings on these properties remain accessible to those earning up to two-hundred-and-forty percent AMI. We're creating long-term solutions for workforce housing that will allow these essential workers to remain on island. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund can further reduce home prices with funds already approved at previous town meetings. In short, these projects offer substantial benefits to the community. They come with zero cost to the town and will help us keep the people we depend on to keep our schools, our hospital, and public safety systems running. I urge you to support these zoning changes and help us make a meaningful impact for the future of Nantucket. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. Point of order?
Yes.
All right, it's Lee Saperstein. The maps that we were supposed to look at had all fallen. Could we, as part of the presentation, at least briefly see the maps?
Of course.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Maury.
Would you show the map for this? There you go. There's the map for warrant Article eleven. Ms. Goss?
I'm Vicki Goss, and I commend the ideas behind these articles. I deplore the location. Everybody says these are great areas for development, and everybody keeps developing right here. And that's another hundred cars down the road from the airport or on Surfside Road. That's just too much burden for this one area east of the Rotary. It's a mess as it is. Can somebody please develop west? There's a lot of land out there. I really like the idea, but this is too much density, again, in an area that's already too dense. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Yes, Madam Moderator. Ugh, I'm a little bit tired. Donna Marie Quinn, seventy-one Skyline Drive. I'm opposed to this for sure. He wants to change this, Clifford Williams, to bring it into the town septic, sewer septic, whatever. It's gonna change the whole rural neck of the woods. It's terrible. I'm for affordable housing, but this is too much. And I'll be voting negative on the other article coming up as well. Thank you.
Thank you. So it's a first. We have someone who's going to speak to us from the gym. If you could state your name, and I think they'll even put your picture up.
Oh, please don't. Okay. Hi, my name is Megan Boyes, and I'm rising tonight to ask this community to seriously consider the support of these articles, this one and the few after. Having been a past employee of the hospital, the public school system, and the post office, and during most of those years as a divorced mother who struggled monthly to pay my bills with over forty percent of my pay going to pay rent. It was a struggle for me, and I'm sure it is for other women in my position, never mind a young family starting out searching for a home here on Nantucket, a place to call their own. I never did buy a place to call my own, but I do all right today, so don't worry. I'm not here speaking for myself, but I'm speaking for the essential community members we are losing by not providing affordable homes for them. In fact, a child I took care of since he was two months old just moved away because they cannot afford to buy a house here, and it breaks my heart. Okay, I digress. We need teachers, we need policemen, we need nurses, and dang, we even need doctors to live here. The development of this area gives us and our community members a new neighborhood where people will love going home from work every day and be proud of, just like they did for the folks over in Satcham's Path. We tried to help our teachers with the Educational Trust, remember that? Well, it didn't work, and now we have private entities that will come together and try and build another neighborhood along the same format as Satcham's Path. A neighborhood, not another forty B. There is already so much in-building happening all over this island, and each and every neighborhood, just like where I live, but not in where there's the estates. And we know that's never gonna happen out there. But with these restrictions, I just don't understand the lack of support from our boys for this new neighborhood, a possibility for people that can actually call a place their own and feel good about going home every day and be a member of our community. And we get to keep those people to stay here. We need them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Peel?
Thank you. Excuse me. I do, I commend Stephen on his idea and goal with this project. Unfortunately, I am strongly opposed to this. And it's, I think it's like an onion. You gotta start peeling back the layers to kind of see what's going on here. And right now, you're taking Lug Two and cutting the zoning down to R5, which is five-thousand square foot lots. That is a drastic, drastic change. And I think that sets a very bad precedence for future development on this island. I'm also, I sit on the board of the Surfside Neighborhood Association, and in our July meeting, the residents of Surfside voted unanimously to oppose eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, these articles as well. The density of this project, I just think it needs to be rethought. Like I said, I commend the idea, I commend what he wants to do. I think that it's forty units and eighty bedrooms just on the woodland side. And I'm sorry, I didn't look at the, but all together, I mean, eleven more units and, what, twenty-two something maybe more bedrooms? And so, I mean, you're looking at over a hundred, a hundred and two bedrooms. And you have Webster, which is a one-lane road, and then coming in through Skyline, the Boulevard. I mean, we have the Richmond project with the density over there. They're gonna start the work. We have a two-year project that's gonna start on Lover's Lane and all of the work over there. Again, I'm all for housing. I think we're getting too dense and too tight of an area, and we need to start spreading this out, if we can. Thank you.
Thank you. The gentleman in the gym?
Good evening. Graham Kilvert. I am also totally opposed to these two projects. Mr. Maury and Mr. Williams knew what these properties were zoned when they bought them. It doesn't provide them sufficient profit, so they've basically gone back in and they've played the affordable housing card in an effort to increase density to a level that is unprecedented in this neighborhood. These two projects alone will triple the amount of traffic that's currently in this neighborhood. I just think that if their need for affordable housing is great, which I understand, it needs to be better located, as has been said, it's all out here. This project will abut the four-hundred-plus-unit Richmond development, which we know what that's done to Old South Road. And so all of this is gonna dump onto Skyline Drive, which will then dump onto the Boulevard and either Surfside Road or Old South, which neither of those roads can support any more traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. Up in the back? Isn't the sound great coming from the gym, by the way? It's like being in there.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Is this turned on?
Yes.
Patrick Tafe, twenty-one Skyline Drive. What you can't really see on the map is the four-hundred houses of Richmond that's just north of all that yellow coloring there. So this neighborhood has taken quite a hit. This, this article and the next three really is spot zoning, and the Planning Board recommends to take no action. And maybe we have it all wrong in this room. Maybe we should let developers tell us how to develop the island and not the Planning Board. Maybe, maybe they know better. I don't think so. I do not support this article or the next three articles.
Thank you. Mr. Maury?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. You've heard a few times, just recently, about the four-hundred houses, which are just to the north of this property. And it's true that they exist. It's also true that there's no traffic connection between that development and Skyline Drive. That was the wisdom of the Planning Board and the Select Board. There's a restriction on any vehicle traffic connecting these two. So, you know, is it as the crow flies nearby? Sure. But they are not the same neighborhood. The traffic impacts from the Richmond development do not impact Skyline, do not impact woodland. And in fact, at the election of the Select Board, any traffic generated from this property could go back through the Richmond development if that was the prudent thing to do. But there doesn't need to be any connection between Richmond Development and Skyline. And to the point about the bad precedent being set of Lug Two going to R5, look at the zoning for Satcham's Path. It was Lug Two, and it is Lug Two. This is how, for years and years, decades really, we've had to create affordable housing. If there were five-thousand square foot lots available today that could be built on and sold at prices that were affordable to municipal employees, well, they already would have been bought, and somebody would have put a pool in the back of each one of the yards. They don't exist. They don't exist. And that's why, long before I started my two-year process of pursuing this Woodland Drive property, which is the subject of the next article, this property was identified as one of five ideal sites for the development of affordable housing. I didn't choose that. I didn't start it. These people did, down here, and some of them over there, in the housing groups and the planning groups. They decided this was the ideal locations. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Williams, or the woman in front of Mr. Williams?
Hi, my name's Jody Patterson. I am speaking in support of this article because what I'm hearing a lot of with the people that have spoken prior to me is, we need affordable housing, we understand that, we support our schools, we support our fire department, we just support our hospital, but not in my neighborhood. And I have my property, and I bought it, and now I don't want to have other people have a piece of Nantucket. I don't know if any of you have read the extensive restrictions that were put on these properties today through the Registry of Deeds, but I have. And they're impressive. They are restricting it to who can own it for year-round purposes only, either owning it and living in it, or owning it and renting it year-round. There is a maximum sale and resale price of any dwelling up to two-hundred-and-forty AMI of any building. This isn't Satcham's Path. This isn't, some of these are restricted, all of them are, according to what I am reading. Is that accurate? And they're also giving first, right of first refusal, you know, restrictions. There's marketing restrictions where Stephen Maury explained the other day in a meeting that I participated in that these are gonna be offered to schoolteachers, to hospital, to town staff, all of these, before they go out into the public resale market. I, as someone who live on this island and do not own a home, this is something that is interesting to me. This is a way that potentially my family could own a home here, and I thank them for that. And I understand, if you live in a neighborhood where you have these big, large properties, that it's discouraging maybe to you, but that's what the planning process is for, that's what the development process is for, so that these properties are developed in a way that doesn't destroy the neighborhood. And I respect your right to have your opinion on that, but that's mine, and for a community that's constantly trying to find affordable housing, I don't know. I think maybe this could be a start, at least.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Gasparo?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. My name's Arthur Gasparo, and I think that the map on the screen really tells the picture. The yellow area is eighty thousand square feet, and then to take out these two spots and reduce, increase the density by sixteen times is overly drastic. I think that it's not just about the neighborhood, but we really need to consider the infrastructure. Every vehicle that leaves these properties is gonna end up on Old South Road and Surfside Road. And I think that we can all relate to what it's like to sit on those roads now. Yes, affordable housing, absolutely noble goal and needed, but at the same time, going from, to increase this by sixteen times in order to make it profitable for the developer to be able to do it, shouldn't be the reason that we should change the zoning so drastically. The Planning Board, Finance Committee both voted unanimously not to support this. This is a really circumvention of that planning process. Whether the property was identified as part of an early stages, looking at a Housing Production Plan, does not make it so that it should absolutely be approved. I ask that you consider the impacts that are related to making such a drastic change of a sixteen times increase. The restrictions that have been, that were just recorded this morning on this property are only in effect if they get what they want here at town meeting. Make no mistake about it. It is subject to the sewer change and the zoning change. Why don't they put the restrictions on it for the lot that's there? There's, there's no reason that they, they couldn't do that. There's no reason that this lot couldn't be served by sewer, excuse me, by septic systems. And so I think that it's important to also understand that the details of, it's not just about affordable housing, it is also about profit. The two-hundred-and-forty percent AMI, I believe that is somewhere near a million dollars per a lot. I think woodland, Mr. Maury's proposed forty. I don't know how many Mr. Williams is gonna do here, say eleven or sixteen, you know, fifteen million dollars. It's, there's big money here.
Thank you.
That was the end?
That's the end.
Please don't. Thanks.
Mr. Williams?
Yeah, I assure you, I could sell it, build a couple more trophy homes with swimming pools and make more money, so don't worry about me making a dollar bill. Anyhow, started this process about three years ago. The first meeting I went to, Ken Bogran, God bless him, came in before I got to speak and said, there's only four percent of the land left on Nantucket. Who's gonna work with us? What are we gonna do? And I raised my hand like I was in first grade. I will, I will, I'll work with you. I will. I'll work with you. I'll work with you." And I've been trying to work with the town for quite some time, and maybe I haven't articulated enough what we want to do. We talked about the restrictions we did put on the property. We're here for 100% town employees, workforce employees, whether it's Coast Guard, FAA. We're trying to solve the problem, which this town meeting has voted for every single town meeting for probably 10 years and appropriated tens of millions of dollars to support. And finally, here's the piece of land. It's never been done before. 100% town employees, workforce employees. If you don't like the zoning, I don't know, someone make an amendment to change the zoning to 10,000, whatever you want to do. My initial plan was to put in... not a high impact. If you go out to the property, you'll see the three-story Richmond tenement houses. We were proposing like 10 cottages, like at Monomoy Village, or was known when I was a kid, Dismore Cottages over by Island Lumber. Low impact. We're going from these three-story buildings down to maybe two-bedroom cottages, whatever it is. But I'm willing to work with anybody, but this is a start. And when I was a kid, this was an asphalt pit and a junkyard, so... and Steve's property's just been cleaned up. It's been a junkyard for about 10 years, so if... I'm not sure when they say it's going to impact the neighborhood. I think we've cleaned up the neighborhood, so...
Thank you.
Hopefully vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Ann Kuspa, Housing Nantucket. I'll be voting for this series of articles for a couple of reasons. I think this is the type of zoning exchange that we need to be doing. In other words, when we allow more density, there should be some kind of assurance, which the developer is doing for us, that there is a restriction recorded with that. So I think it's very important, and I think it makes a lot of sense that they put it on only if these get passed, because, I mean, it's very expensive to develop affordable housing. It's very expensive to develop, period. So engaging with private developers to meet the monumental need for workforce housing is a good practice. This is one of the properties, as was mentioned, that was identified in the housing production plan, so that's a good thing. And I think that traffic can be studied and there can be methods and ways to divert that around. So for those reasons, town meeting has approved a lot of money for affordable housing, but taking private funds also and developing these affordable housing units is very good for the community, so thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mooney?
Thank you. Erica Mooney, I live at 60 Skyline Drive. Couple of things. As Art Gasparo said, the deed restrictions are only valid if these articles pass, and it was said that these were really good deed restrictions. Regarding town employees, they only are good for you if you're in a union. There are plenty of people who work for the town who aren't in a union. We have non-union employees who have... are desperate for housing. This won't apply to them. Also, in terms of marketing, one of the deed restrictions says it will be not more than... or not less than 30 days they'll give you notice. So that seems pretty tight turnaround to me. Regarding the type of Monomoy Village development here at 44 Skyline Drive, this property has been a staging area for recycled houses. There was two moved in the last two years. One is still standing on cribbing. The other one was then moved again to another neighborhood. There's an HDC notice right now to move one of Kim Glowacki's houses from Greg Linav to here, which is a story and a half with a garage that is not a two-bedroom house. So I don't really know where these other houses are fitting in with this Monomoy Village idea, because I don't really see how they're the same. These are private roads in terms of a cut-through not being available to Richmond. The planning board actually asked the county commissioners to work with the property owner of this property to possibly accept an easement for access through to Richmond, and that might just be a pedestrian access, but that's still something they're discussing. This is not a moot point. And I want to say that Lug 2, this area on Skyline Drive, is in the Country Overlay District. The purpose of the Country Overlay District, and this is directly from our charters, is... or our zoning code, is to discourage development and preserve areas characterized by traditional and historic rural land use patterns to discourage the spread of dispersed development patterns that promote automobile dependency, which this would be, because this is not near an RTA stop.
It's over.
I know.
Thank you.
Hi, John Vecchio. Can we call for a vote or am I out of order?
No, you can call for a vote if you'd like to.
Yeah, call for a vote.
Okay. So that's a motion to move the question, not debatable, takes a 2/3s vote. A yes vote will adopt the motion and end debate, and we'll then go directly to a vote on the main motion on Article 11. A yes vote will... a no vote will defeat that motion. We go back to discussing Article 11. So it's 1 for yes, 2 for no. Voting is open. I should mention that the vote on this, although it is a zoning article, is a majority vote, because the planning board determined that it qualifies for the exception pursuant to Chapter 358 of the Acts of 2020, known as the Economic Development Legislation of So on the motion by Mr. Maury, yes, 439, no, 140. That motion is adopted. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. A motion to call the question. Hey, look, it's been a long night. Motion to call the question is adopted. Now, we're going to a vote on Mr. Maury's motion on Article 11. Just checking to see if you guys are paying attention. So a yes vote will adopt Mr. Maury's motion. A no vote will defeat that motion. The motion is essentially to adopt Article 11 as printed in the warrant. 1 for yes, 2 for no. Voting is open. Okay. Yes, 182, no, 399. That is not adopted. Okay. Article 12, page 34 of the warrant, had a negative move not to adopt the article. Motion from the planning board. Finance committee supported the planning board. Mr. Maury is making a motion essentially to adopt Article 12 as printed in the warrant. Is that your motion, Mr. Maury?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Mr. Maury?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This is a separate property from the one we discussed, but it is in the same area. I think, you know, I can imagine how this vote's going to go, but there's some things that are important to be said. Over the last five years, this body has approved almost $90 million for the purpose of creating affordable housing. Almost none of it has gone to homeownership opportunities. This project doesn't require... it's not asking for a single dollar from the town. The town could use some of its money to buy down the prices of the homes, but it's not required. This is year-round housing, being built by private developers at affordable prices with first look to town employees and nonprofits. This is directly south of industrial land, Coca-Cola and Cape Cod Express, and the densest existing apartment complex on Nantucket, Richmond Meadows. There are available traffic connections through Richmond, if that's what the planning board and the select board desire. Does not require Richmond to go through to Skyline. Whatever is going on with staging houses next door, I don't know why that's relevant at all. We're talking about new construction of small-scale homes for year-round people. If that's not what this body is looking for in terms of economically accessible housing and homeownership opportunities, I don't know what it is that people want. Do you want three-scale... a three-story apartment buildings like Richmond has? Do you want denser, much denser development like at Wiggles Way? And much more dense at 6 Fairgrounds Road? Is that what this community wants to see? If you can't put traffic where there is no traffic, because there's two-acre lots all around here, where do you put it? Where there already is traffic? I'm at a loss. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Ms. Lepre?
Yes, hi. Is this on? I'm Mary Lepre, 87, Skyline Drive. So I have a couple of questions. One, the 240% AMI, I think Mr. Gasparo said that was a million-dollar lot. So I work at the public schools, and I'm not really sure how a teacher is going to be affording a million dollars. I know that we got a great new contract, but that's still a pretty expensive home for the teachers and I... I mean, nurses and doctors, too. I'm sorry, but I... we are not developers, so we don't actually make that kind of money. Also, it's right now, I believe, that this area is an unlicensed junkyard, so my concern is maybe about what... I've driven by, and there's like a camper that got condemned and some broken-down cars and oil cans and all sorts of stuff. And so, living with... as someone who lives in a house that was affected by PFAS and has a yard that is affected by PFAS, so no, I cannot have a garden and grow vegetables, because before I even moved in, my yard was contaminated. I would wonder, for all of the years that this was a junkyard, since at least 2018, how that soil is, and is that what we can do? Is that the best thing as we can give people that need affordable housing, our teachers and firefighters, police, nurses, doctors? Is land that used to be a junkyard and probably has contaminated soil, but at least you have a roof over your head? This is not about NIMBY. This is... the zoning is ridiculous, I think. And I just think this is probably not the best place for that, given its history, because I would prefer not to poison anything... anyone else. I mean, I think in our neighborhood, we've dealt with enough cancer that we probably don't want more people to have to deal with that.
Thank you. Mr. Clidden?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I rise in support of this article, and I want to kind of lay out a couple of reasons why. One is, this town was very supportive in Sachem's Path, and I think that it's a model example of exactly what we want to be doing. Restricted, but year-round homeownership, small homes. If you take that image, you overlay Sachem's Path, and it's almost the same shape. This town has committed a huge amount of money towards affordable housing, done a great job building some, not fast enough. The reason why we're not fast enough is because you need developers to develop stuff fast. Towns are a little slower. They do a good job, but developers do it fast. I grew up on Rugged Road. It was a dirt road when I grew up. And down the street from me was a neighborhood that was developed by Jeff Kusurlik, and my mom will remember this very well. When I was a small boy, I was very perturbed by the Bulldovers destroying my forest. And I was so angry, and I wanted to leave him with a good statement, that I spray-painted my name all over his truck tire, so that he would know what little boy he was messing with. But in my naivety as a small child, I didn't realize how many great families moved into that neighborhood. It's not 100% year-round, but I'd say it's about 80% year-round. Tucker Holland, our housing director, lives in there. A number of other great families who do a lot of great services on this island. It's a beautiful neighborhood. And we should be building dense, year-round housing, and the only reason... I've been saying this for years, we should ever change zoning. We change zoning way too much to allow more seasonal housing and not enough year-round housing. This is exactly what this does. And if it's not going to be here, we're going to have to do this in the future, because we need homeownership. I think this is an opportunity to change the zoning. It also gives the select board and the planning board opportunities to design it with neighborhood feedback that are more appropriate. I've seen lots of great developments over on the Vineyard that are little pocket neighborhoods. Exactly what we want. And I think there's also some flexibility in the fact that it's up to 240% AMI. The developer's not going all the way at saying, "Hey, town, if you want to buy down some pieces, you can."
Thank you.
Hospital, you want to buy down some pieces, you can. So I'd urge you to support this. Thank you.
Mr. Fee?
Hi. First off, Tobias, my pa... Tobias, we've been looking for him, my family has, for years. My dad sold the property that Jeff Kusurlik developed for about $750,000, which puts it into perspective how long ago it was. So, you know, we've got you now, Tobias. No, I support this. It's the right scale. If we can't build it on top of a... what was a junkyard, then where can we build? If we can't improve a junkyard to put 40 families into small cottages that are in keeping with the island, then where are we going to put it? You know? I just... I think that... I think this could... this will be the cheapest and probably the quickest. If this... if we vote this tonight and vote the changes later, this will be the cheapest and the smartest and probably the quickest housing that is put on the island. And, you know, if it gets past the town employees and past some of the other people who are going to be offered, I guarantee two or three of the people that work for me that are in their late 20s, early 30s will be lining up, trying to get this. It is not going to be too expensive. You know, we all think it's expensive, because we're old and we remember the old numbers. It won't be. I just spent a lot of, you know, double, and I had to help my daughter and spell double what he's talking about, and she has two decent incomes and they're going to make it, but that's only because we were able to help some. I think a million dollars seems crazy, but that's what people are going to be doing. And I... so I commend him for trying to do this. This was not easy, and I had wanted to speak on the earlier article, so please support this.
Thank you. In the gym, Mr. Kilvert?
Thank you. Yeah, I don't believe that any of the people who voted against 11 are against affordable housing. Again, it's a case of density. What Mr. Maury's doing is taking a... an area and asking to increase the density, not two times, not four times, not 10 times, 16 times. The impact of that on the communities around him, the small community on Woodland Drive with 60 cars dumping into it will be devastated. Then that comes on to Skyline Drive, and it goes down to the Boulevard and out to Surfside Road or to Old South. We cannot afford that, and it's not a question of not in our neighborhood. The volume is too much. And I think if he came back with a revised request for fewer houses, increased density, but not the density he's looking for... we're seeing this all over the island. I mean, look at Surfside Crossing. They've come back with a 40B, and they've increased the density. You can't squeeze another doghouse on that site. That's the same thing with this property. He's got so many houses in there, he's gone for maximum density. That's the problem. Please don't vote for this. Thank you.
Mr. Holland?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I want to applaud Mr. Maury for putting this out here. Somebody said very wisely that there's a fatal flaw with all affordable housing. It's next to something else. And density... density is actually a principle that a lot of conservation organizations around the country embrace when it comes to housing. Because it means that we can then conserve the open spaces and more sensitive areas that we all enjoy. We are blessed on Nantucket to have the conservation organizations that we have. 53% of our island is in conservation organization hands. And that doesn't include town-owned land. There's less than 3% of the island still to develop, as I understand, not counting redevelopment of, of developed properties. I don't know if this is precisely the right density, but I'm going to vote for this article. I, I think it is moving in the right direction and is what we need to do if we are going to provide ownership opportunities to the types of folks that Mr. Moore identified. That is critical if we want to have things like a police department and a school and a fire department in the future. Talk to the police chief about how many of the recruits that were hired in 2019 that are still here today. I believe the answer is zero. Maybe this is the right thing, exactly as it is. Maybe it needs to be tweaked. Campbell Sutton put out a great challenge earlier tonight. If this does not pass, are the parties going to come together and really come up with a agreeable proposal that can move forward? And I know she was talking about STRs, but the same thing applies here. Are the, is, are the parties going to get together and really work it out? I support this.
Thank you. Up in the back?
Jay McConnell, Woodland Drive. You can't see on there, but 40 houses in that square, though that oddly shaped. Forty homes with 100 parking spaces drawn in. 100. Currently 12 homes on Woodland Drive for the past 35 years. This is the country overlay district. It's here for a reason. It creates separation. These are all private roads. The town took Orkua and I believe the road, Monahasset. They were supposed to pave it, put in bike paths. None of that's done. So we want to put in 40 homes for locals and all your kids are going to get on their bikes and head out to go to school on these roads that are private. Don't have any bike paths, no sidewalks. If anyone has driven the road, come out of the airport, take a left. It's embarrassing. There's a puddle that will swallow your car up. We as a town should be embarrassed that we haven't taken care of our own infrastructure, but we want to say yes to things like this. We're all suffering with the amount of cars we have. The roads aren't getting any bigger. We can't just keep adding houses. The market determines who's going to live on Nantucket. That's the way it's always been. I've been here a long time. A long, long time. I paid a lot of money for my property, as has everyone who lives there, years and years and years. This is not a NIMBY. This is enough is enough. I believe we just had Moore Healy sign a second dwelling anywhere in the state. So second dwellings are going to happen in basements. These will all have basements. They're all going to end up with illegal apartments or legal apartments. So what, are we going to have 200 cars? 250? When is enough enough? I mean, folks, how, how, how long can this go on? We have a problem. We don't need more houses. We need housing. Maybe we need to talk to the land bank. We have a lot of land that's not being used for anything, but so that'll get everybody going, but we got to start thinking. We can't just plop houses down. Thank you.
Yes. Up here?
Hi, my name is Darla Stuckey. I also live on Woodland Drive on 22, so I won't reiterate what everyone else has said, but I just want to make a point about Richmond Great Point Development. It seems to me that's not yet built out. And so for purposes of this zoning ordinance, as well as the sewer capacity, I think we should just wait and see what happens when that's completely built out. Because I do think also 40 houses on our little one-and-a-half-lane street is too much. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mooney?
Erica Mooney. I'm kind of wondering what the point of having country overlay districts and town overlay districts is? If we're just going to allow anything to be built anywhere? And I wanted to say that during a select board strategic planning workshop held on October 24th, 2023, Board Member Matt Fee said during a discussion about quality of life and rural identity that we have a town and country and we shouldn't intensify the country. He went on to say that certain places should have been green and it should be open space and we shouldn't be saying, let's put tertiary, let's put four houses. Put density where density belongs and not in the other places. Now I'm hearing something different. Again, when the country overlay district has very specific language in the zoning code and it, it discourages development and preserves areas that are characterized by traditional historic rural land use patterns and to discourage the spread of this diverse dispersed development patterns that promote automobile dependency. And this would be a major traffic generator. And it wouldn't, it, it, it just, I don't understand, like, I don't really know how it's going to go through to Richmond and what would stop the reverse of people coming from Richmond into the private roads of Skyline and Woodland and Webster? I, I, I just don't know. It's like, it's a good idea, but we have overlay districts in areas like this for a reason.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In the gym? Yeah?
Hi, my name is Emma Young. So nervous right now. But I just want to say that the NIMBY-ism in the room right now is breaking my heart. Like, my heart feels like it's going to burst out of my chest. I am so, so fortunate that I own a home and I get to live on Nantucket. And I don't have a lot of peers that do. And I have seen so, so many people move. And I just want my friends to have a place to live. I know the traffic sucks, but I just wish we could be authentic with how we feel. Like, it, no, no one wants in their backyard, thank you Tucker for that beautiful saying, like, I hear so many people saying, well, this is just a bad spot or it's, it's too dense. And it's like, but where? Like, where is a good spot? I live mid-island and it's super dense and a development just got put in. And now I live in this beautiful neighborhood where there's a landscaper and someone on a town committee and there's all these beautiful locals that live here. And yeah, they're really close to my bedroom window, but they get to live here. They get to share this space with us. And I just wish we could kind of think about our neighbors and realize that we all want to be here. So I'm really in support of this article. I would love to see more housing here. I don't even care how expensive it is. Like, let's just put some houses in because I really want my friends to be able to live here. And I know that might seem silly, but I hope you will think about your, your own friends and wanting them to live here too. Thank you.
Thank you. Up in the back?
I vote no on this one and I'm going to tell you why. The numbers do not add up financially. They do not. Yes, we need teachers, firefighters, police, everything. But a million dollars? After the people get done paying their rent, or the, excuse me, the mortgage, all their other payments, say they may have a couple of children, I don't know, putting food on the table, these are not adding up. I will just go on to say one more thing. Yes, we need housing. But when you go to some of the neighborhoods, and I do know of one house that's a four-bedroom that has 26 people living in it, five of them are fa, five families living in a four-bedroom. There's eight in the basement. A mother, a father, a grandmother and five children. Youngest one, two years old. Oldest one is not even in the primary school, whatever. So there's five children, another group in the garage, five families in this house. How is that, how is that possible? And the, you know who's getting rich? It's the landlord. Yep, that's what's happening here. A lot of cars.
I think you people are ready to vote on this. I know there's a lot of people still at microphones, but keep, if someone wants to move the question, we can take a vote.
Madam Moderator, I have a question on the article.
Sure, ask a question and then we're going to vote.
So, so one, I thought that you would have to have a to, town overlay first before you decided to move into the lug two with a residential. But my question is, so it said that there is no public money going into this. Now, because there's no sewer here and none exceedingly close, that will take extra funds to move the sewers and it's going to add in areas that aren't in the needs list. But I'm just wondering, like, how does that balance sheet happen? Because on the one hand, I hear it's no public money. And on the other hand, I hear about all this money that we gave to, the ha, six-and-a-half million annually that we gave and how that can, which adds up to, I think, 145 million borrowing capacity perhaps. And I'm just wondering how this doesn't end up somehow utilizing those funds or we end up having to pay everybody more money? Or do we pay them less so that they can get in? I don't know. So the, the finances for me are just a little funny.
Thank you. There's a question in the gym?
Does this go against our safe harbor housing?
No, I don't believe so. Chris, Christie?
With the current proposal, it's a restriction up to 240%. If the developer worked with any nonprofits or anybody to get things down to 80%, those units would count on our shy list and could keep us in safe harbor at a future time.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to, we're going to go to a vote on Article 12. A yes vote will adopt the motion made by Mr. Moore. A no vote will defeat that motion. Just to be clear, we're voting on the motion on Article 12, the actual substance of 12. We're not voting on a motion to move the question. We're just going right to a vote. Yes will adopt Article 12. No will defeat Article 12. One for yes, two for no. It does qualify for the economic development legislation, so it requires a majority vote. Okay, on the motion on Article 12, no, 197. I mean, yes, 197, sorry. No, 335. That motion is not adopted. Okay. Article 13. Starts on page 34, continues to page 35. Finance Committee motion was moved not to adopt. It does require a two-thirds vote because the select board acting as the sewer commissioners voted not to add the parcels to the town sewer districts. Mr. Moore is going to make a motion, which is essentially to adopt Article 13 as printed in the warrant. Mr. Moore, is that your motion?
Yes, Madam Moderator.
Okay, is there a second? Motion made and seconded. Mr. Moore?
I'll let Cliff speak to this. I think with the size of the lot, you can probably get away with Septic if you're not going to have the zoning change. It's my two cents, but Cliff may have a different opinion. This is his land, not mine.
Mr. Williams?
Yeah, it'd be great to be in the sewer district. I mean, the whole philosophy was to build affordable housing, but I'd still adopt the sewer district. That would be great.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing no hands. Oh, Mr. Gasparo?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'll, I'll keep it brief. I think that it's very important that the, the town meeting understand that this received a negative recommendation from the select board acting as the Board of Sewer Commissioners, as well as from the sewer director. The addition of this to the sewer district needs to be considered very carefully. It's not in a needs area. We all, many of us in this room went through 20 years ago a lot of work related to the establishment of sewer districts so that the expansion of the, the utilization of the capacity at the treatment plant is for the sensitive environmental areas that need it most. And that's not what exists here. The proponents really want the sewer here because it essentially will remove all bedroom limitations that is imposed by Septic due to nitrogen loading limitations. So please vote no on both of these articles. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Williams?
Yeah, Art said it was a negative recommendation, but I guess it was voted in. And then they went to another subject and came back and voted it out. I'm not sure why. I was never invited to the meeting. Another one of those meetings. Wasn't invited.
Thank you. Okay, so I, yes, Mr. Tiff?
For, for everyone in the room that's not really familiar with the Surfside area, all of the dense housing units on Nantucket are in the Surfside area. The 40Bs, the Richmond, everything's in Surfside. So it's, it's not NIMBY. It's enough is enough. And density, we have density already. So I'd just like to say, vote this, vote this down.
Thank, thank you. Okay, so this does require a two-thirds vote. A yes vote will adopt the motion made by Mr. Moore. A no vote will defeat that motion. It does require a two-thirds vote. It's one for yes, two for no, and voting is open. Okay, on Article 13, yes, 87. No, 373. That's not adopted. Okay. Article 14 is on page 35. Received a motion not to adopt from the Finance Committee. It does require a two-thirds vote again because of the action of the select board on July 24th, 2024. Mr. Moore's motion is essentially to adopt Article 14 as printed in the warrant. Is that your motion, Mr. Moore?
Actually, Madam Moderator, I'd like to make an amendment and have this adjust the portions of the properties now located in the residential 20 zoning district.
Okay, can we get the map back? Okay, can we get the map back?
That's not the best map. There's one that shows where the R20 line is.
Yeah, there might be another one. That one?
Yes.
Okay, so which part would it be? The kind of blue?
The part that's shaded in blue.
Okay, so we're gonna amend Mr. Maury's motion, so that it's moved to Chapter 41, Board of Sewer Commissioners, Section 41 3A, Town Sewer District of the Code of the Town of Nantucket, is hereby amended by adding the portion, the portion of the following parcels currently located in the R20 zoning district, and located within the special areas recommended for sewer designated within the Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan adopted October 2014 to the sewer district, and then Map 79 Lot 208, 13 Woodland Drive, Map 79 Parcel 8, 13A Woodland Drive. Is that the motion?
Yes, Madam Moderator.
Okay, so it's just the portion of the property shown in blue that's located in the R20 zone. On your motion?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The rest of Woodland Drive...
Okay, okay, go ahead.
Thank you. The rest of the properties on Woodland Drive are now in the sewer district, although none are connected to Town Sewer. Adding properties within the R20 zoning district of this blue shaded area, which is outlined in red, there are four separate buildable lots, which match exactly the rest of Woodland Drive. Adding properties in R20 to the Town Sewer District is in keeping with the CWMP, including the most recent update. In a memo from the Select, it was called the Board of Selectmen at the time in 2016, Mass DEP had certified that there's ample capacity at the Surfside Treatment Plant for properties within the Wellhead Protection Zone. And, yeah, that would be in keeping with the rest of the neighborhood. So I would ask that with this reduced request for only the portions that are in R20, that voters support adding to the sewer district. Thank you.
Ms. Moore?
These properties have come before, they came when I was sitting on the Affordable Housing Trust. The other property, Mr. Williams, came to the trust, and at that time, the trust, he was asking for support for a zoning change for that property on Skyline. And the Affordable Housing Trust's response to it was, if, if this were deed restricted for year-round housing or affordable housing, we would be having a different conversation. And they're close, the deed restrictions are in place, and it is my opinion, as someone who's been trying desperately for a decade to help us solve an affordable housing crisis that is acknowledged over and over again by votes at town meeting, by headlines in the newspaper, this kind of development is precedent-setting in a good way, in the sense that we have a private developer willing to build housing scaled to be affordable to year-rounders who probably make more money than the Covenant 150% AMI, but they cannot buy in the open market. And the Affordable Housing Trust and the Select Board have been working very hard to increase opportunities for year-round housing in the homeownership space for folks in, in these sort of attainable income levels, sort of above the deeply affordable up to 240% AMI. I applaud the both developers for coming to the table with the concept of deed restrictions. Unfortunately, I think it was too late for this body to really understand how all the pieces of the puzzle fit together. But what they're doing is, they would like the contribution from the community to be a zoning change and access to sewer in order to make the ability to develop attainable homeownership opportunities for year-rounders with a deed restriction at a density that may not be ideal, but I don't know where we do it if we don't go with less than ideal, because there's just not tons of land available to create these housing units. The days of a single-family home on a quarter-acre lot are gone. Quarter-acre lots are selling for $900,000, the land. So if we are not supporting a private developer who's trying to do this for our community by affording zoning changes and hookups to sewer, we're never, ever gonna get ahead of this. It's not gonna happen tonight, but I really want everyone to think about what this means for our year-round community to have an opportunity like this. So that's my two cents. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Mooney?
I just have two questions for the sponsor, if I could. With your other article for the zoning defeated, does that mean that the deed restrictions are now moot, or does this article, does it hinge on this article as well?
Yes, the deed restrictions will be rescinded.
Okay, and do you know if this article passes, where the sewer's going to be run? Like, will it be run down Woodland Drive? I think there's a dry sewer area in place right now.
That would be a discussion for David Gray, but we have agreements with two of the property owners to the north, so that we can bring sewer to this property, to this portion of the property, without bringing in on Woodland Drive in the event that neighbors on Woodland Drive don't want to be compelled to tie into sewer.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Gasparo?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So what I would bring to your attention is that Mr. Maury has already subdivided this property into six lots, and essentially, there's no real reason environmentally to approve this change. There's no reason for affordable housing that is gained if you approve this tonight. Yes, there's capacity in the plant, but that was under the Comprehensive Waste Water Management Planning, should be given to areas of greatest environmental need. That would be the identified needs areas such as Somerset, such as Matticket, such as Shimo Two. That's not the entire public wellhead recharge area. And so essentially, by approving this, the lots that he's created, those 20,000 square-foot lots, now could have unlimited number of bedrooms, and it's essentially, yet again, just a financial windfall and no real gain for the community. And I don't think that the capacity in the plant should be used for that reason. And I hope you will vote both the amendment down and the article. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Malden?
Thank you. Emily Malden, speaking for the Nantucket Land and Water Council. We did not support these articles, and certainly recognize that in the development of affordable housing, an increase in density is often a component of that. We were concerned with the amount of density that was proposed in these particular areas, given that they're lug two in the country overlay, which has already been discussed. I think in addition to, there's also some challenges in not fully understanding or being able to see the plans that were proposed for these, for these areas. In addition to echoing Mr. Gasparo's comments, I just wanted to sort of ask the question, I think, to the Board of Sewer Commissioners and to the town, because obviously, there was a negative recommendation for this article from them, and I don't know if this amendment would change that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lowell?
Thank you. I've had enough. I gotta say something, because now we're in like, sort of, the teaching mode, public hearing mode of town meeting that never works. But what Brooke just said, watch the video of what she said, because everything she said is true. We are in a place that we supported for the last 50, well, let's just say 40, years. There's no more dirt, folks. Ain't no more dirt left to build on. When you hear cars, I'm so sick of looking at those stupid signs. I like to write under every one of them, the cars, the 800 cars or the 1,000. Maybe they're cats now, I don't know. It was just a meme for that. They're already here. They're not like, in Hyannis, ready to get on the boat and add 800. No, 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 no. They're already here, just driving in different roads. Now, we voted as a plan, as a plan member, I didn't support these articles, because it's this is why, because I knew this was gonna happen. I've been through this already, for years. Well, this is the country. Well, this zoning should never have changed. Well, we should have all changed. I was actually asked once by a former Select Board member, why don't we change all the zoning in one year? I'm not gonna tell you who said it, but it's actually a good question, because it'll never happen, ever. It could never have happened. This place isn't big enough, okay? You know we have R1 in Walwinnet? R1, you know what R1 is? What he's trying to do in Walwinnet. We have R20 in Hummock Pond. Okay? Hawthorne Park was a junkyard. The only reason it got done with that select development is because it was in R20, and they could have had a lot of houses with A&R. You know, A&R is approval not required. You could have just built tons of houses there. Okay? Zoning is really complex to understand in the sense of every little thing.
Mr. Lowell? I know, I know.
I have saved myself for this.
But we didn't.
I mean, come on, Sarah, let me talk.
No.
You let Toby talk longer than me. All right, anyway.
Just, just say, are you in favor or not, and let's move on.
The point is, this is an exercise in, in experience and learning, and we're gonna have to come back with this stuff, and hopefully, they don't sell to just pools and cabanas that we all bitch about. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tiff?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Hey, can I ask through you to town council, can, can we use town land to build affordable
I mean, yes, but...
Well, the answer is maybe, depending upon how, whether there are any restrictions on that land, whether it's Article 97 land, but if the land is just held for a non-Article 97 purpose, then yes, and that happens all the time here in Nantucket. Land is dedicated, town-owned land is dedicated for affordable housing. There are lots of examples where that has occurred.
And Article 97 is Article 97 of the state constitution, and it's land that's dedicated to water conservation purposes, I think? Something like that?
I think you could get everyone in this room to go for more affordable housing. If you spread it out everywhere on the island, not just put it in one area, I mean, Surfside's taken all the hits on dense, dense housing projects. Brooke was just asking earlier, you know, where else could we do it? And, and Matt got me thinking, there's an eight-acre parcel next to something natural up on the cliff. That, you could probably put 80 houses up there, Steve. This Park and Recs owns it right now, and that's town land. Let's, let's spread it out. Let's not put it in one area. And that's what we're proposing here with the sewer article.
Thank you. Mr. Gray? Yeah, and then I'm going to the person in the gym after Mr. Gray.
Good evening, everyone. David Gray. Just have some quick numbers here, that the 2014 CWMP did count areas that were in the wellhead recharge districts. However, there was an awful lot of other pieces within this 2014 CWMP as well, that we're coming up against now in other ways. I have some quick numbers for everybody, just so that, to get an idea. Since 2014, there's been 66, 6,650 bedrooms added to the sewer system. It equals about 731,000 gallons a day, or 263 million gallons a year. That's just bedrooms that have been added in total. Richmond bedroom count right now is 760 bedrooms, which is about 83,000 gallons a day, up to 30 million gallons a year. We also gotta understand that the pump station that this area goes to, all of Richmond and a whole bunch of other areas all around the airport, come from the airport pump station, and that does 135,000 gallons a day, or 48 million gallons a year, that go from the airport pump station to the Nashup pump station, and then to the plant. So there's a lot of, a lot of other numbers out there that just, I think is important to have out there. We've issued 2,634 permits since 2014, all together, and as of, as of today, our flows this month alone at the plant, we're permitted for 4 million gallons a day by our permit. Right now, the high number in August was 3.35 million gallons, and the low was 2.9, so a little over 2 million gallons a day on average. And September, we were just sitting about 3 million gallons as well, and the low was about 2.6. So a lot of other pieces to our review on the sewer checklist and all the other conditions that we have to lean on, in my world, in the sewer world. You know, the pump station that all of these flows go into was built in 1986. It has not been upgraded since. It's currently under design to be upgraded, but it was built in 1986, and the force main was around the same time, which goes directly to the plant, so... When I look at the checklist and everything else, I look at a lot of other pieces of it. That's why we're digging up a lot of other roads around the island, but I just wanted to get those numbers out there, that, just so, in context.
Thank you. The woman in the gym?
Hi, I'm Liz Schaefer, and I had the privilege of having dinner with our police chief last month, and I was surprised to learn that she's in a rented house and really can't move in fully because she has to wait to see if it's gonna be extended or if she's gonna have to move. And when I hear the discussion about, you know, teachers and nurses, and maybe there are people who are not specific to all of us, so they don't really have a face, but Jody has a face, and I just think that we have to support some article at some point and provide housing and permanent housing for the people who take care of us and we rely on, and I just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you. Yes?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Andy Baccino. I wanna thank Mr. Maury and Mr. Williams for putting a pretty comprehensive proposal on the table to solve some challenges that we have. It's pretty clear that we have these challenges. And I also wanna make clear, as a builder, whether this gets tied into sewer for four lots or eight, or however it turns out, the developers are gonna make just as much money, whether they build 40 buildings or do eight, sensitive to the neighborhood buildings, that are gonna be worth 3 to 5 million dollars. So I think that's an important acknowledgement for us as a community to make, that we're ignoring an opportunity. And I'd like to offer my last minute to Mr. Lowell, I don't know if he can do anything in a minute, but if, if you think you can, go.
He, he can't. Mr. Peel?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Matthew Peel. I just wanna touch on a couple things I keep hearing today, you know, words like "small", "quick", you know, "dense", things like that. Why do all of these affordable housings have to be these tiny little projects that are filled, you know, that are dense with 40 houses and 40 apartments? If Mr. Maury came in here today and asked to rezone this property to R20, and then subdivide those lots through the Covenant program, I bet that would pass 500 to 20. But that's not what was asked today. Today, it was, something different was asked. And so I'm tired of hearing everybody get beat up on Surfside, and these people saying that it's NIMBY. It's not. It's not. It's a dense, dense project. You, Mr. Maury asked for feedback. This is some feedback. R20, do it through the covenant program, but that's not going to make enough profit for him to justify something like that, is what I'm guessing. And so, let's do this. You know what? We also want to retain people in this community, and they don't want to live in a tiny house for the rest of their lives. They want to be able to grow. They want to be able to sell it, move up and move on. People don't want to stay in communities like that.
I'm going to go to the man in the gym, and then I'm going to go to Mr. Maury.
Yeah, hi, Phil Garofi. You know, I haven't slept for, I live in Woodland. I haven't slept for three nights now, so don't be surprised. I've got a medical condition, don't be surprised if I collapse. But, of course, I'm definitely not for this. But I'd like to ask this question. The ninety million dollars that's going towards housing supposedly, why hasn't then been spent? And why can't we subsidize houses that are out there for sale? And, and help a teacher, really help them, make it so it's damn affordable for them if we have this extra money? And the land bank, don't, you know, when I, I looked the numbers up, and if I've got them right, there was twenty-four million dollars extra last year. We do have enough land, I think. I love their mission. I don't want anything to happen to that land bank. I want them to continue it, not a, not a penny taken from that land bank and not an inch of grass taken for development. But if there's twenty-four million dollars left over, or twenty-three, or whatever it happens to be, that's twenty houses where we invest a million dollars in that are already on the market. Less is more. We need housing, not houses. It's done. And the, whatever's done at Woodland, if that was allowed to have gone through, it would be a hundred sixty, two hundred cars. Are you kidding? And Jay's right about the bikes, but the thing is, in the world we live in, going to school, everybody drives their damn kid there. When I was a kid, we walked a mile. So, you know, I mean, there's got to be something done about that, but I don't think it's impossible to find a way. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Maury, did you want to be recognized? And then I can go to you, Ms. Moore.
Yes, thank you, Madam Moderator. If, as Mr. Peel says, the goal would be to see what would happen in R20 and see what affordable housing could be built there and some medium-scale development, that also requires sewer. Three bedrooms is the maximum that's going to be allowed to be built in this wellhead protection zone on half acre. That can't be affordable for anybody. And, you know, you can call me, you can call me whatever you want, but that's, that's the truth of the matter. You know, you're not going to be able to create housing that's affordable for anybody on a half acre of land with three bedrooms. So if, if you want to see what can happen in medium density, it's going to require sewer. Or very likely, nothing gets built here. There's, there's some complicated engineering thing, I'm told, where we can cross easement, create twenty-three bedrooms of capacity between the lug-two area and these lots. And it gets, it gets complicated and messy, but, you know, something's going to be built there. We're going to get twenty-two, twenty-three bedrooms, I think is the, no, excuse me, thirty to thirty-one bedrooms, if we have to go septic. But that's not likely to be affordable for, for year-round folk.
Thank you. Ms. Moore.
I, I just want to debunk the notion that people building homes for year-rounders or affordable homes shouldn't make a profit. There's no incentive to build housing without profit. We seem to not have a problem building McMansions all over Nantucket, but when somebody comes to us and wants to build housing for real, with deed restrictions for year-round families, somehow they're profiteering? I just don't understand the logic of that. I'm sorry.
Thank you. The gentleman up here.
I call the question.
Okay. I think we're ready to just go to a vote. Can we skip the calling of the question and just vote on the motion on Article 14? So a yes vote will adopt Article 14 with the change that limits it to the portion of the parcels located in the R20 zoning district. A no vote will defeat that motion. It does require a two-thirds vote. A yes vote is one, a no vote is two, and voting is open. And we have one more article, and Ms. Rayport has been very patient, and I hope you will That would be. Okay, on Article 14, yes, one fifty-nine, no, two sixty-eight. Okay. Article sixteen starts on page thirty-six, goes over to page thirty-eight. It received a motion not to adopt from the Finance Committee. Ms. Rayport has provided a positive motion. The motion is essentially to adopt Article sixteen as printed in the warrant. Is that your motion, Ms. Rayport? Oh, there you are. Okay, is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. Ms. Rayport.
I know, just hang on, she's telling me something. Ted Gielletti is going to explain it.
Madam Moderator.
Oh, there you are.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Gielletti.
Can I be heard okay? Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Article sixteen will make changes to the Nantucket Planning and Economic Development Commission. This eleven-person commission has existed for over fifty years, and every long-range, comprehensive plan Nantucket has ever had was developed under its oversight. This includes Nantucket's master plan, which was rolled out in 2009 and still is to be updated. Nantucket used to be a leader in planning, but over the past fifteen years. But we've fallen behind, and we have real long-term problems to address. I think we've been hearing some of that tonight. Article sixteen builds a more pro, a more accountable planning commission, which will be more effective in planning for Nantucket's future and more inclusive of different voices. As you are aware, that all members of the NP and EDC are appointed. Are you aware of that? Most of them are appointed from other boards. As a result, it's not accountable to the voters for getting long-range planning done, and it's very hard, if you are a person who wants to serve on this board, to get to serve. Today, this NP and EDC is comprised of all five members of the Nantucket Planning Board and six other appointed people. One person is appointed from the Conservation Commission, one from the County Commissioners, one from the Housing Authority, and three people whom the NP and EDC themselves choose. Article sixteen makes the following changes. It ends the practice of allowing NP and DC Commission to perpetuate itself by choosing its own members, as it currently does. It adds five directly elected seats to ensure responsive government. It includes the land bank and historical commission. It decreases the number of seats given to the planning board. Currently, they have five votes, and each other board has one. Article sixteen gives every board one representative and one vote. It adds a term limit to protect against entrenched interests. It adds language consistent with its mission to protect the island's environment and historical legacy. This legislation passed already at town meeting in 2023 as Article eighty-three. The proposed Article sixteen introduces one change, the term, which is limited to nine consecutive years. Otherwise, it is the same legislation which passed last year. Is now a bill, Senator Seer sponsored, S. two, four, six, seven, and is waiting in committee at the State House. It, of course, could die in committee. If you believe in these changes tonight, this is your opportunity to vote yes, to tell the state to move forward and pass this bill. Thank you very much, and I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you.
Lois Alamanti.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, Lois Alamanti. I am urging a yes vote for Article sixteen. I've been following the discussion and debate. I believe that a change in the way we select the members and the number of members of the NP and EDC would be beneficial. Lack of planning has led to the continuation and exacerbation of issues such as traffic, overcrowding, and housing. Some of these may have been alleviated if there had been more direction over the last fifteen years. I was quite surprised to hear that the master plan has not been updated in fifteen years. That's a long time, and I don't know why. If there's been some progress toward an updated master plan, then we haven't been informed, and I also ask why. I'm in agreement with adding more directly elected seats on the NP and EDC, as this would provide for more direct accountability. I don't understand why the current NP and EDC is so opposed to this. I watched the negotiating sessions with Hillary Rayport, and the board offered minimal compromise. There was a flat refusal to include the historical commission. The historical commission is such an integral part of planning on Nantucket. It should be obvious to include them. Two and a half years have passed with broken promises and little progress on any planning goals. It's time to pass Article sixteen again, and by a much greater margin, to show that we are in favor of a change, to get some new people on this board with the motivation to get the work done. Please vote yes on Article sixteen. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Snow.
All right, thank you, Madam Moderator. It's been a long night, so I want to thank everyone for sticking this out for the very last article of the evening. I'd like to thank the voters in advance for careful consideration of Article sixteen and the position of the Nantucket Planning and Economic Development Commission, who opposes this article. Tonight will be the third time town meeting has discussed legislative changes to the commission proposed by the same petitioner. On behalf of the commission, I'm asking that you vote no, that you support the Finance Committee motion, and that you allow the commission time to finish their work to propose changes to this important enabling legislation, which was the directive given by voters at this meeting in 2002. The commission was created by the legislature in 1973. I hope we can all agree that while some things we love about Nantucket have stayed the same, many changes have taken place over the past fifty years, and the commission agrees with the petitioner that it's time to evaluate the role of the commission. The future role and composition of the commission, which is one of thirteen regional planning agencies within the Commonwealth, should be well thought out and not rushed. We respect the time of town meeting voters and our legislators. Therefore, it's important that we take the steps necessary to finish our work and advance legislation that will receive broad support and that can truly accomplish the vision and the mission for the future. Since the 2022 annual town meeting, the commission has spent a considerable amount of time discussing their role now and into the future. We have agreed upon a mission and vision to guide legislative changes. A substantial amount of time has been spent discussing a membership composition that represents the current and future aspects of this region. The petitioner has suggested that her membership changes would enhance accountability by creating elected at-large seats. We disagree with that assessment and prefer a process that will attract the greatest number of applicants, who may be more representative of the overall community profile. The commission does see the value in changing the appointing authority of the at-large seats, and we propose to ask the county commission to assume that role. Please don't be misled by statements made by the petitioner about the many changes facing the Nantucket community being a result of no long-range planning efforts by the commission. That's a great soundbite and an easy accusation to make, but it simply isn't true. The commission has no regulatory power, none, and even if it did, there are local agencies responsible for addressing local issues. Unlike the other regional planning agencies in the state, we don't need to coordinate planning efforts with multiple municipalities to address planning issues. We have just one municipality in our region, the town of Nantucket, which has become increasingly sophisticated. We provide staff support, and the commission reviews and accepts plans as appropriate, such as the master plan. I think it's safe to say that as a community, we've never had as many plans to address as many issues as we have today. The Planning Commission doesn't need to step in and reinvent the wheel. To set the record straight on the master plan, it's the planning board that has the statutory authority pursuant to MGL Chapter Forty-One, Section Eighty-One D, to develop a plan for the long-term physical development of the municipality. The first master plan was approved in 2009, and it's in the process of being updated now. It's disingenuous to characterize that plan as fifteen years out of date, and it's even more disingenuous to blame the commission for not updating it sooner. Plans require time to be implemented. In-town meeting has voted in favor of articles, year after year since 2009, to advance the goals of that plan. It's time for the petitioner to stop accusing the commission of not fulfilling their obligations, which is untrue. When you cast your vote, please remember that we are discussing changes to a regional planning agency. The commission is not a local permitting board. It was created to serve in an advisory capacity to address regional concerns. We work closely with other regional planning agencies in the state. We have access to funding, technical assistance, and legislative resources as a result. So please support the commission and vote no on this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep, Ms. Raismann.
Thank you. I'm interested to hear all of those enthusiastic comments about the Planning Commission, which has not issued a new plan for fifteen years. It's nice to know they don't think that it's that important that it be revisited, given all the development and planning, or lack of planning that we've been seeing in the last ten years. But putting that aside, my voice is for preservation, and what offends me the most on all of the discussions that we have had, and I've had with Hillary, with the designated subcommittee of the planning, of the NP and EDC, what troubles me the most is that the absolute rejection of historic preservation as having a voice. I mean, people come here because we are the island that we are. We have the housing that we have, that's, that's, who knows, eight hundred houses before the, built before 1850? We've got people coming here because we are as beautiful historically as we are, and the Planning Commission does not want, the NP and EDC does not want to have a voice given to preservation. You have to wonder why. You have to wonder whether they're angled entirely towards development, but whatever it is, it's absolutely insidious to the effect that it's, the long-term effect it's going to have on Nantucket if we don't have a preservation voice on the NP and EDC. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Molden.
Thank you, Emily Molden, for the Nantucket Land and Water Council. This article was not addressed on our recommendation sheet this year. However, I did want to clarify for town meeting that we have supported it in the last two years, and we are still in support of the proponents' recommendations, largely for many of the reasons that Mr. Gielletti initially articulated. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Rayport.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate everyone staying to hear this article. So the reason why this article is back on the warrant is because it is a bill at the State House. It did pass at town meeting in 2023, and if it, if it hadn't passed, it wouldn't be back on the warrant. The other reason is that the Planning Commission was asked by town meeting to develop their ideas, and that was two and a half years ago, and they haven't put anything on the warrant. And many of the people who were considering these changes in 2022, they were told, we promise you, please give us time to finish our work. We promise you that we will put something on the warrant at ATM 2024, and that has come and gone. The, the reason why I have suggested... The reason why I have suggested these changes, which I hope everyone understands, this is a little confusing because the right-hand column is a concept of a plan. There is nothing here on the right. The middle is what is on the warrant. But the, sorry, I lost my train of thought. So the reason why this is here is to try to bring some more balance and get some more long-range planning going. And I think, you know, I understand that people feel that there is planning, but we're not seeing the results. We learned a lot, I mean, what we just went through was painful. Like, that, where do we put it? Well, that's something that our planning, that we're supposed to have happen with planning. So the idea of this article is to build accountability by, one, adding the directly elected seats. We have a lot of elected boards. No one's suggesting that elections are bad. I think elections are good. They do set a high bar, but I think a high bar is required. And then bring in Historic Preservation, the land bank, in addition to the other people who are already there, and give everyone one vote, and have this group do the long-range planning. The Planning Board does what they do. This group, including the Planning Board, can look out for the future of Nantucket.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm going to go to the woman in the gym.
Yes, Megan Boyes. I just want to encourage people to vote for this. We've brought it up twice before, three times a charm. I hope we get it through. I have been coming to town meetings since I moved here in 1997. I've seen a lot of change on this island. And I have, you know, once when they changed this whole commission back, I can't remember the year, I had questions regarding it. Why wasn't the historical preservation included in this? This is what, like, was shared. We could possibly lose our register of being a historic place if we just continue to let people do what they're doing to our historic homes here on the island. So I encourage everyone to vote for this article. Thank you.
Ms. Longacre?
Thank you. Many of you, I'm sure, have seen the signs and flyers that say to vote yes on this for accountability, and I want to address that directly because I feel that the call for accountability is related to the open meeting law violation that did occur with NP and EDC. I was the chair at the time for that. I acknowledged that it was my inexperience and my final call that created that violation, and I resigned my position as chair, and I had not renewed my position on the NP and EDC. I am no longer a member. I want to point out that accountability is very much a personal choice, and it is the individual who executes that. And I think it is highly unfair to say that this article will produce accountability just because it includes elected positions that are now on there for five years. The fact is that three years ago, when I was appointed, there were only four remaining members of the NP and EDC from that time. There is plenty of opportunity for people to serve. We have appointed several people as at-large members for the first time. Everybody who has applied for an at-large seat, with the exception of Ms. Rayport, has been appointed, not necessarily on their first try, myself, I was not appointed on my first application. I am, you know, just really offended at the language that has been used for the last two years against the NP and EDC, which is, in some cases, outright lying, in many cases, repeated half-truths or mistruths. And I've encouraged this board to say no to this, to let the NP and EDC come forward with its proposal, which expands the membership, which diversifies the membership, and which is not technically flawed in the way that this article is by putting a nine-year term limit on a five-year election. So you elect somebody the second time for ten years, and they've got to quit after year nine. It just hasn't been well thought out. It hasn't been well considered, and I would encourage you to say no to this and not let the mob rule. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to go, oh, you're gone. Okay. Yes, go ahead.
Hi there, Megan Perry. I actually filed the open meeting law complaint against this commission, and the attorney general sided with me that they did violate the law. Their response to me initially was, mm, you didn't file that complaint in enough time. That's what town council advised them to reply to me, not gee whiz, you're right, we did make a boo-boo, let's see how we can rectify it. They made me appeal it, and again, the attorney general sided with me that there was an open meeting law violation. So I'm in favor of expanding this commission, and I am in favor of accountability, which I think expanding it will help provide. I see no harm in expanding it, and I don't understand why it has to be basically a self-appointed commission of planning board members. It should be our whole community that's represented, and I think by including the historical preservation, I think you're doing that. I think by having land bank on that, you're doing that. Concom on that, you're doing that. It's not just the Planning Board self-appointing themselves. So if anybody would like to discuss the open meeting law complaint that I filed and they were found guilty of, happy to do that after this meeting. But again, I'm all for accountability on this. Thank you.
Ms. Cornell?
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I will be brief. Finance Committee has reviewed this article at length three times. Three times unanimous motion not to adopt. Simply stated, electing people to the NP and EDC does not guarantee that they're good regional planners. There is not, every commission and board and committee in Nantucket doesn't have every member of every other committee on it. In fact, one of the things I think we do well as a community is that we reach out to other committees and commissions when we need to, to work together. So I can't, by the fact that they are emphasizing that the Historical Commission is not on this committee does not preclude them from working with the Historical Commission. So with that, just so you know, and when it passed last year, it was 183 to 182. So it wasn't a resounding pass. And, yeah, so, but I just wanted you to know why. We've discussed this, we've probably spent, I can't even ask, I met six hours, seven hours on this one article, ten. I'm getting ten from my finance. You'd think I'd know numbers better, seeing I'm on the Finance Committee. But in any case, we have spent extensive time on this article and didn't just whimsically say motion not to adopt.
Thank you. Ms. Dues?
Yes, and Dues. The people who are defending the status quo regarding the NP and EDC membership say that being elected to the Planning Board is the best qualification to serve on the NP and EDC because the people on the Planning Board are the elected planners. It might come as a surprise, but the Planning Board's job is not actually planning. It's permitting. The Board is responsible for subdivision control, secondary dwelling permits, special permits, and second curb cuts. They oversee compliance with the planning that has already been done and relevant laws. Once or twice a year, in anticipation of town meeting, the Board talks about tweaks to the zoning bylaw. It's important to understand that zoning is not the same as planning. In fact, anyone who attends their meetings will see that the Board spends little to no time on planning. Actually, there is not anything in their mission that mandates them to do the, to do long-range planning. It is not what they are elected to do. But they also don't do it when they meet as the NP and EDC, where it is their job, if they did. Our often mentioned plan, fifteen years old, would have been updated by now. I'm voting yes on sixteen. It's time to acknowledge that the Planning Commission should be separate from the Planning Board because they have very different jobs. We can't waste any more time. We need an accountable and functional, and I would stress functional, long-range Planning Commission now, including five directly elected members to the Planning Commission, dedicated to long-range planning, is the best way to get there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Lumper?
I just wanted to agree with Ms. Perry because I think that they did have an open meeting law violation, which sort of concerns me with transparency. I did come into the nest of people who disagree with everything that I'm saying right here. That's, that's fine. I chose this microphone. But I guess I don't see a problem with having five elected people. I think it's weird that, I think this is the only committee that appoints their own people, and I would, I, here at the Select Board, when you're asking people to apply for positions, and I have, that you want more people to get involved, and this just allows more people to be involved. So I guess I don't see, I know you all disagree with me, but I don't see the problem in having five elected people and only one person from, so that it's a more even. And I get it, I'm in the nest right here of people that disagree with me, but I, I think that that would help give people a feeling of more transparency if we did this, and if they had two and a half years and haven't come back with something, like, then maybe they can bring something to change it at the next town meeting.
Professor Wohl, you have two minutes.
No, I should get, like, twenty to explain the lies first.
Just, just do two minutes.
It's, it's true, okay? We don't appoint our members, okay? We appoint three, and we are changing that, okay? But it takes time to fix all this stuff. So we have the whole thing up here right now. So I want to clean up what Mary said and what's been said, like, four different times tonight. The county commissioner that's on our board, on our commission, is appointed by the Select Board, County Commission. Then the Housing Authority member is appointed to us by the Housing Authority. They're also elected. The Conservation Commission member is appointed by the Conservation Commission to be on the Planning Commission, okay? Then you have the three at-large members, yes, that we currently appoint one per year, they have three-year terms. Now you move over to the NP and EDC, what we have done so far. It takes time. We have potholes that have been around longer than it, than we've worked on this, okay? It takes time, okay? We have, we've reduced it to three members, Planning Board. Now, personally, I was against that, but we, but I've come around. I think that's a really good idea. There's a lot of good reasons why we should do that. Things happen to people, they need time off a little bit, things like that. It can rotate. The land bank, remember, was my idea, December of 2021, when we started talking about recompositioning the Planning Commission in 2021. We had inner conversations about changing it, but we'd never got to this level at that time. The Conservation Commission's staying. The Housing Sector member, we already have on other housing positions, so we think we're going to keep the Housing Authority because it's a state agency, okay? Social Service member, we have as one to add. The Chamber of Commerce, which I think is a really good idea, we should have done that years ago, and the Arts and Culture. Now, the three at-large members, which we still feel we should still have the same, but we're going to give up the appointment process to the county. Now, we seem to not have any issue with the county appointing the Concom, which has more power than the Planning Board. They don't even have to come here to change anything. They go do it themselves. The ZBA is also appointed, another regulatory board that now is under fire. Everybody forgot about them until Southside Crossing. And they get appointed by the Planning, by the Select Board. So that, I feel, is a good thing, to give that up, okay?
That's your two minutes.
But election, elected members is not going to make it more diverse. It's going to make it less, okay? Now, we have met with Hillary personally. We've had private meetings with her, with our little group. We offered her an HDC slash Housing Commission member.
Please wrap it up. I know it's frustrating, but everybody else does it.
Yeah, well, yeah, true. Anyway, we've offered a lot.
No, not anyway, thank you.
We've offered, yeah. Don't be fooled. Vote this down, please. We'll be back with something a lot better.
Thank you. Okay, up, the man up in the back, and then I'm going to go to the woman in the gym. It's on.
Hello?
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm Angus MacLeod of Pippin's Way. I'm an elected member of the HDC, but I'm addressing you today in my role as the Chair of the Nantucket Historical Commission. The Historical Commission is a seven-member commission appointed by the Select Board. We are separate from the HDC, and our area of responsibility is preservation planning. This means the protection of the island's historic sense of place, which includes buildings, landscape, and streetscapes. Our commission discussed the changes proposed by Article sixteen and voted unanimously that the Historical Commission have the right to appoint a representative to the NP and EDC. People come to Nantucket to experience the historic town and rural setting. The NP and EDC is actively developing our roadways. We must make sure that these changes don't leave Nantucket looking like the mainland. It's dismayed to me that the NP and EDC has not put forward any concept on its own that includes the Historical Commission having a seat and a vote. One reason offered is they have staff support from the Preservation Planner, but this is not the same as a voting commissioner representing historic preservation. As to why this appointment should fall to the Historical Commission and not to the HDC, the reason is each commission has special and distinct duties, with preservation planning falling to the Historical Commission and the architectural review and permitting falling to the HDC. By continuing to deny the Historical Commission a seat on the commission, it seems that the NP and EDC is out of step with what is important for Nantucket. I hope you will support Preservation having a seat on the Nantucket Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Holgate in the gym?
I'd like to ask that we move the question.
Okay. I think, given that response, we can probably just go to a vote. Okay, so we're going to vote on Ms. Rayport's motion. It is essentially to adopt Article sixteen as printed in the warrant. A yes vote will adopt that motion. A no vote will defeat the motion. It's a home rule petition. It requires a majority vote. It's one for yes, two for no, and voting is open. Check, please. Oh, you should run the credits, the, you know, the thank you now. Yeah. Okay, on the motion, yes, 286, no, 114. The motion is adopted. I will recognize, that's really very rude, by the way. I will recognize Ms. Moore, the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, for the purpose of making a final motion to dissolve the 2024 special town meeting.
So moved, Madam Moderator.
Is there a second? Motion made and seconded, all in favor. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Were you at Rue Alger? Were you at Rue Alger?
We were in Gayville.